Good evening and welcome to the February 21st work session of the Penfield Town Board. I'd like to call this session to order, and if our clerk would please call the roll.
Barry.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Leanhouse is absent. Ackington?
Here.
Teklis?
Here.
All right, thank you. First order of business, we have some minutes before us. These are the minutes from November 15th, 2023, that were redistributed, I think, at the last session. So any questions or comments pertaining to the minutes? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made in second. Call the question.
Barry.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Ackington?
Aye.
Teklis?
Aye.
All aye.
All right, thank you. Monthly reports, I've not received any information regarding the monthly reports from Supervisor Leanhouse, so we'll leave that in his hands for the next session. Moving along, we have no guests tonight presenting, so that'll put us into action items. So the first action items, I'll turn over to Ms. Ivors. I believe that's on your agenda here.
That is, thank you very much. So we've received an application for a conditional use permit for use of the rear property, the rear building of the property located 1807 Penfield Road, for a new beauty salon. And the building is currently unoccupied. The applicant indicated that there would be three technicians offering a variety of beauty services, to include nail service, nail technician, eyelashes, hair cutting and barbering, and also potentially teeth whitening as well. I will bring up for you the Google Street Map, so you can sort of see where on the property it is. And I do apologize. So, we're looking at the back of the property, we're currently, we're sitting on Mott's Lane. So this red building is the outbuilding, 1807, the primary building, which I'm circling up here, is where Gateway Natural Health is located. And you'll recall, they recently came in for a revised conditional use permit. And so this proposed use, and I'll turn it around, and you'll see that some of the photos are more current than others. So out here, you see the nice striping, but when you go to look from the other direction, the striping and updated photos go away, so I apologize for that. The applicant has indicated in their application that there's four striped parking spaces in front of this outbuilding, and by lease, they would have access to those. In addition, I'll spin us around and try not to make us all seasick in the process. Mott's Lane has public, designated public parking, right behind the building. That's used sort of like, it varies from day to day and from time of day, but this is intended to support the businesses in the Four Corners District. So the applicant was indicating they would likely reserve their leased parking spaces in front of the building for their customers, and have employees park as needed back here in the spaces that are designated for public parking on the street. The applicant is here. In the application, they did indicate their hours of operation being Monday through Friday, and he'll correct me if I'm incorrect, 10:00 to 6:00, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and then closed on Saturdays and open on Sundays from 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. So yeah, so it's an interesting, most salons are not open on a Sunday, so he's capturing the market. So I would, if you're ready for the applicant to come up and answer questions that you might have, or if you have no questions, that's okay too, no pressure.
Sure, come on up if you'd like.
You can take a seat, just, you need to move the mic down, because otherwise, the folks downstairs in the television land yell at us. And I don't want you to be a guest and get yelled at, or me to get yelled at, for that matter.
Welcome, and thanks for joining us tonight.
Oh, would you like to? That would be lovely.
So again, you know, thank you for joining us tonight, and I guess, right off the bat, maybe just tell us a little bit, from your perspective, about the business. And I'm curious to know, you had a location someplace else, and you're just coming to Penfield, or is this a secondary location, those sorts of things?
What it was, was I had a lot of, like, techs that was doing more sort of business out of their houses, so they have a lot of, like, they basically already have their business already flowing, it just didn't have an area, a designated area to do it in. And now you gotta worry about telling the dog to sit down, telling your kid to sit down, now the whole, the whole thing is like, it was an hour, now it turned into three hours, you know what I mean? So I actually got them all together, and I was like, I made a plan, like, I will get a spot for us, and I'll have you guys actually doing your business out of there, and it'll make it a lot easier, you know, for, for your clients. And, you know, you don't have to worry about the kids, dogs, stuff like that. So I don't have another spot, but I just had, like, I was inspired by them, and they were, you know, very tenacious, they were driven, driven females, and it's just that, they just didn't have that part, one designated spot to be, and it'd be more comfortable for them, you know. So it's not like I had another spot, but this is a new spot that I'm actually, I'm trying to get this together.
Great, great. And again, so it's by appointment only?
Appointment, yeah.
The clients would all be scheduled, and?
Yeah, yeah.
Carrie, is that space, just, not being from over the inside, is that just one common space?
So I believe it's got some divided spaces on the inside. Actually, if you want to be, I'm happy to find it, but there was the listing from previous listings available, so you can see the inside photos. I'm a nosy girl, so I always look for online to see what I can find. But my understanding is that there's two defined office spaces in like a front foyer, so the space is already configured internally to allow separate spaces for technicians to be able to operate their services. Is that accurate? Did I say that accurately?
Yes, yes, you are.
So they'll have the whole space, it looks like?
They'll, yeah, they'd be renting the whole rear building. And I think we were, there was, there hasn't been a tenant in that building, to my knowledge, as long as I've been there, but maybe Mark was recalling that there might have been some other businesses, like a small pet store of some sort in the past.
The water for, the water for South Sudan?
I don't know if they were in this rear building, or if they occupied a tenant space in the main building.
Yeah, they might have been up front.
It was the, yeah, the owl.
Bob Canower's daughter, I think, ran the owlry out of it. The last thing that I knew was, was that, use of that building.
So you'll rent, like, you'll rent the chairs?
Yeah, we're, yes.
And they've already got clientele?
They already got clientele, yeah. And that was the main, the main part, it's not like a business that we just, like, it's just starting. I'm just starting this, actually, but they already, they started. They already, like, yeah, they already established, yeah.
Well, my name is Catherine, and I'm his mom.
Yeah, she's the inspiration on all this.
But I've been in the business, the beauty business, for almost 45 years, since I've been 18, and my mom, she started a lot of the hairstylists in the whole Rochester area. Her name is Jo Nick, and so we've been in business, and she's almost been in business for like 50 years. So it's not like we're just starting, and I'm supporting my son with his new business, so that we're gonna go in with a lot of history, a lot of experience, and I'm gonna be a lot of the business, helping him with the business side of it, making sure everything is very professional, making sure that the business is run, you know, A1, with the licensing and all of that. But we're gonna bring it, because I've been in the business for many years, we do all types of hair, we're doing, like you said, he's doing the teeth whitening, we're gonna have a lot to offer this community, and we're gonna work along with the other businesses too, where we're gonna bring money to the area as well, 'cause I see all the different, like Starbucks, and all of that is gonna be perfect. Also, the health business, I'm all about health too, you know, so that's gonna be good. I see all the businesses around, and I know that we're gonna be able to, you know, help them to grow, with their growth as well, bringing money to the community.
Great, great. Thank you for that. Any other questions from board members?
We did, Candace shared the inside, it's nice. I would've thought that you were gonna have to do a lot of work if it didn't.
That was like a blessing in disguise. We don't have to do renovations, 'cause everywhere that I went, it was just, it was more renovations you had to do, and then it was possibly a thing that they don't want you to do, so now you have stipulations, you know, but this was a spot that, like, it was already done, and he just was like, I mean, once you go to the board and you see about that, I just want everything to run smoothly, 'cause it's, I mean, I know it is, but Four Corners of Penfield, Penfield, that's a historic spot, so I understood how we were gonna go through the motions, so, you know. But, yeah, yeah, it's great, it's great, it's great.
Well, we appreciate you doing your homework in that area, and coming up with a business plan, and can't go wrong with a mother-son combo. So welcome to Penfield. For the board, it does look like the space is renovated, and looks like it's ready to go. I understand that in terms, from an administrative review for the application, there's no concerns or questions?
Yeah, so I think it would be up to the board's, you know, discretion. I think in this location, there's, the issues that you would look at was availability of parking, hours of operation. I think those are both very reasonable here, they have a clear plan. So if you were amenable to moving forward with authorizing administrative approval, I could do that administratively, it's up to you.
Yeah, so we had another application recently in the, in the general area, and in that case, it was previously occupied, but the new user was different enough where we wanted to open it up to a public hearing, just to see if there's feedback, and like you said, with that district, we do wanna keep at least the energy, the vibes, the kind of the nature, the feel of the neighborhood, true to what it was with Penfield. And I think in this situation, it is, it is one that I would feel comfortable moving administratively, because the, it was, it's unoccupied. And I think Penfield, as a town also, we want business filled in the area. So I don't have as, the similar concern of the switch, or the style, or something where I think there would be public concern. I think the public would be more in favor of having buildings filled and business thriving. So if there's no objection by the board, I'd like to make a motion that Ms. Ivors be authorized to proceed administratively for this case.
All right, we have a motion? And a second? Call the roll.
Excuse me, Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Ackington?
Aye.
Teklis?
Aye.
All aye.
All right, well, thank you. Ms. Ivors, we'll continue to work with you guys, and what, when were you hoping to get, what's your target timeframe to?
I know, like, the landlord, he liked to, like, do a, like, real, real, yeah, buy the book, so probably the first, like, the first, I'll probably have everything ready for him.
Gotcha.
As in written, stuff like that.
Great.
All right, well, this first step is completed, so you can mark that off your to-do list. I'll follow up with you tomorrow on the issuance of the actual physical permit.
Did you say what the name of the business was gonna be called?
It's Scar Beauty LLC, but it's elegance international.
Oh, okay, thank you. People were questioning.
Tell them what Scar means, because this is his name.
Scar was, like, what it stands for was sun comes, sun comes after the rain, and I did it like that because, you know, the girls, like, they felt like, you know, we doing all of this, but it's just, it's not, it's not too. But I told them, I said, like, I'm the sun right now, okay? I got you, I got you, I got you, you know, so.
Okay, I wasn't gonna question your business judgment. Coming for a haircut.
Somebody else said that before, and I was just like, okay. I think of Scar as, when you see someone very beautiful, right? Or something beautiful that always stick in your mind, so I'm like a scar stick, so I'm like, okay. You know, I thought of it, you know, I gotta keep it positive, so I'm gonna, I didn't go negative with it, you know, so.
If not a salon, a poetry store at some point in the future, we're gonna work on that next business.
Listen now, so it's elegance, I said it's elegance.
International.
International. So it's all different nationalities, communities.
Yeah, definitely.
And so I, I came up with that name.
And I like that, it flow off a little better.
Elegant, elegant, yes, and beauty, right?
Good luck with the business.
Great, yeah, thank you. Thanks for.
Can I say my happy birthday? I wanna say it.
Please.
Marilyn Monroe brand this. I don't know if they have time, but let me do it real, real quick. Happy birthday, happy birthday, happy birthday, President.
He's been promoted.
Happy birthday and many more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Okay, I'll be in touch. I know you'll track me down if I don't email you first.
All right, Pete, that was better than any cake we could've possibly. All right, moving on, action B, secret discussion, again, Ms. Ivors.
Yeah, so at the, the last legislative meeting, there was a resolution declaring the town board's intent to serve as lead agency, this is a type one action under seeker, requires coordinated review. Monroe County was identified as the only other involved agency that could take the lead on seeker analysis for the action, however, they actually asked us to take the lead. But we had to still navigate that review process, and the coordinated review, we've received responses from all of the involved and the interested agencies, having no objection to us serving this lead agency. And so what we'd be looking to do is move forward with the resolution to finalize the seeker process. To that end, we've provided in the, to the board, the Part II and Part III documentation, and it also includes a narrative to support the answers that were provided in the Part II. So, and I'll just pull that up for you quickly, so you sort of can sort of, everybody sees what I'm talking about, and I apologize when you're looking at it in. So this is, in a type, in a type one action, you're using a long-form EAF. You already saw Part I attached with the original resolution declaring lead agency. This goes through and asks, okay, will this action have any potential impacts to these categories? So there are some instances where we've checked yes, because there is some element to the property or to the proposed project that could potentially cause an impact, and then we go on to say, it's either gonna be no, or a small impact. And so any place that we've said yes, and to sort of have a belt and suspenders approach, we provide a narrative description as part of the, a narrative attachment, that sort of explains, here's what the potential issues are, this is how, it's not a concern, or it's being mitigated. And a good example would be, you know, impact to surface water, you would look at that and say, yes, we are gonna be impacting, there's gonna be stormwater generated as a result of the use and the project. However, the town has to prepare a SWIP, a stormwater pollution prevention plan, we have to, we have to conform to all of the New York State requirements as it relates to stormwater runoff and management, including the installation of stormwater management facilities. And so we know we're mitigating any potential impacts that could be associated with the action. So for similar topics that we might look at would be impact to transportation, this is a fairly low-level use with respect to traffic or generation of trips, it's a very low-level traveled town road as it is, so we don't think that this use is gonna trigger any concern with respect to traffic. So we, we go through all of those types of things, you'll see that as part of your packet. So what I'm asking for tonight would be authorization to prepare the resolution to complete the seeker process, making the recommendation that the town board adopt, take, establish itself officially as lead agency, and then adopt a negative declaration, so that next stages of the project can proceed.
Do you wanna say what, so a negative declaration is?
Oh, yeah. Saying that no further analysis or environmental study is needed, and you don't need to prepare what's known as an environmental impact statement. So on a big, big project where major development is happening, it's affecting many, many acres of land, you might go through the process and decide that there's still additional things that need to be looked at, or mitigation that's needed, and you might, you might decide that you are gonna pause deck something, positive declaration means further study or analysis is needed. Here on this project, it's disturbing, you know, less than seven, you know, up to seven acres of a 76-acre parcel land, of parcel property, 70-acre, 76-acre parcel. And I think it's being done in a careful way, it's avoiding any disturbance of what might be, could be wetland areas, it's being carefully designed, the grading is going to keep cuts and fills on the property, so it's not gonna require trucking off of, you know, soil material. It's, it's a fairly low impact as far as development goes.
Kind of like the catchphrase, catchphrase language would be, no significant adverse environmental impact.
Yeah.
The last time that the town of Penfield was involved in a project that had a positive declaration that resulted in the preparation of an environmental impact statement was the Baytown rezoning, I believe, so. But this is, I mean, this is just, it's a small project.
Sure, and I'll be honest with you, in any other location, potentially it wouldn't even require this detailed coordinator review with other agencies, it would just be the town board taking the action. However, because of the property's location in an ag district, it exceeds the acreage threshold that's established under 617, I won't, okay, I'm not gonna quote the section of the state environmental code, but it's just been identified. And so we want to, we're walking the process through carefully, this fits in with the county's timeline, so that seeker is then completed, and then they can proceed with getting it on their legislative agenda for future consideration.
Yeah, most of the things we see are gonna be unlisted actions, which aren't gonna necessarily require the full EAF or the long form, so it's a little unusual.
Yeah.
There are a few things I just wanna make sure I understand, as I read through it, so understand this is mostly.
And I'm, I'm sorry, I'm gonna interrupt. I realized this evening, as I was going through it, that I had a, I did do like a little word replacement, so it's supposed to be, it's brush drop-off only.
Right.
And so in case there, an earlier iteration of the Part III narrative referenced leaf drop-off, and I've corrected that.
Okay.
'Cause that's not being contemplated, it could be contemplated in the future, but that's a different permitting required through DEC. It's also something that would require further conversation with Monroe County.
Okay.
So that, not, it's not off the table, but it's not on the table for this particular ask, if that makes sense?
It does.
Okay.
It does. What I wanted to understand, so as I read through it, this is just open land, we're not cutting down trees, we're not needing to do anything of significance.
There may be some tree clearing needed for some, no? Some?
There's a hedge row between, so a farmer's hedge row line, so there's no stand of trees, it's a fallow field, the county bought it a couple of years ago, they have not actively farmed it, so it just has tall weeds, grasses on it right now, but there's not a stand of trees.
Okay.
There is a hedge row, so I'm not saying no trees have come down, but there's a hedge row, we kinda gotta punch through the hedge row, 'cause we're gonna look to go in the field in the back. To buffer it from the neighbors, keep the visual impacts down, so that would be the only stand of trees, or any little bit of trees that would be impacted by.
That's what I understood, because then I also read that there was no impact expected on wildlife, obviously, you know, they're not living in the trees, we don't have to worry about the deer, or foxes, or anything like that. What, is this now going to be long-term, and if it's not long-term, what happens after this? This gravel road is laid, and we move out? What then becomes of this land?
It's town property, it's a county property, continues to be the county's property, correct?
So the county's looked at whether they offer, have an eastside location for drop-off of their own.
Okay.
So that's why they're entertaining this, is, you know, they're letting us use their land, we're putting the infrastructure in, so that's the benefit to them, for us, the benefit is, we get a location for resident drop-off. So we're writing the agreement for a minimum of three years, with an opportunity to extend. So the three years gets us through the construction of the DPW facility, gets that in, gets it established. If at that point, it seems mutually beneficial to both groups, and we can extend, then, you know, this may remain the location of it, so.
And, and I think it's at approximately a thousand-foot yard drive to get to where the residents would drop off their things, and the certain hours, it only, it sounds like it's only during daylight, so we don't have people driving this in the dark.
Correct.
Area. And then how is that going to be removed? Currently, we're at the DPW, where we have whatever we need to remove it, will trucks come in, then remove the?
Yeah, so, I mean, similar to today, I mean, Eric's crew will have somebody on site, maybe Eric can speak better to this, have somebody on site that's gonna manage it, so we're gonna have a gated entrance right up at the road, so you can't drive back in there if it's not hours of operation, there'll be a gate right at the entrance, and there'll always be a person on site during operational hours. They can move the brush around, as people drop it off, push it into a pile, and then a couple times a year, the county brings their tub grinder over, they grind up the mulch, right up the brush, turn it into mulch, and then we drop it off back here, as you see, that, you know, then the residents can come pick it up from here, so it'd be a similar.
Okay, and that was gonna be my next question, so currently, where you drop it, right, it's close, it's visible, everybody can say.
Say it.
Gonna remain the same, same location, same pickup, it's just gonna be a different drop-off location.
And will we need to build a facility then, so if people are working, that they have a building to?
I think short-term, no. The intent is that we can actually, whether we bring a piece of equipment over there, or, you know, drive a truck and have a piece of equipment left there, that we'd be able to, you know, have an employee, I guess, come to the site, you know, we may need to have, you know, a portable restroom there, you know, in case they need to use that, but I don't think there, there, no intent for any type of permanent building.
Okay, all right. And, and as far as the, the water, you know, we don't worry about standing water where people might get stuck, the land seems.
Correct.
We're gonna have to install, they're gonna have to install a pond.
Okay.
So as part of meeting the stormwater regulations, based on the size of the impact, once we're over an acre, we have to do a stormwater pond to treat that. So we're in the design of the pond now. The county says they have some millings, we have some millings, so we'll go strip off the topsoil, berm that up, use the berming of the topsoil, and put grass on it, that'll help buffer the neighbors as well, do some minor grading of the land, and then, you know, any runoff would go to the pond, pond gives it a chance to settle out, and then it, you know, continues back, there's an adjacent field to that, it would go through the county's field adjacent to that, so we're not looking for any discharge through any other neighbor or resident in the area.
Yeah, it's an opportunity to honestly clean up any drainage issues on that locate, in that specific area where we're making the improvement, so.
And we did have, BME associates did come out and look for wetlands ahead of time, the county had a similar concerns, we had them do a quick wetland delineation, just to say there was or there wasn't. The area we're looking at going, there is none there, so we didn't do a, further to the west, there's potential, so we made sure we stayed away from that, so they didn't do a full delineation, but they at least came out, looked at it, and said, there are no wetlands in this area. DEC concurs, so we already got response from DEC, and says, we don't see any wetlands in the area, so I think we're good on that as well.
So, so there will be some provisions built in to buffer as best as possible to?
Yeah, and then, obviously, it's, sorry, excuse me.
No, no, just any neighboring homes, and can you speak to the proximity of those currently, and?
That's why we're looking to go, there is a front open field area, we're looking to go to the back, so it does add a little distance for the driveway to go in, but that gets it further away from the existing homes, there's a few homes that are around there, we'll look to berm it. It is on the county's land, so we're doing our initial design, we'll send it to the county, make sure they concur with what we're showing, but we use the berms to, you know, to buffer any visual, you know, impacts to it. I think Eric says you get 10 to 15 drop-offs from residents per day typically, so it's not a high volume, you know, and then the tub grinder's there three times a year, so there may be some noise with the tub grinder three times a year, but that's during daytime hours, there are no nighttime hours, there's no lights, there's no, you know, so it's pretty minimalistic as far as, you know, resident or neighbor impact.
Brush drop-off is scheduled too, right? It's not, or do we have residents that come in the week?
As long as it's open, they can drop off, so at any time, it's open from?
Monday to Friday, excluding holidays, from 7:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
And the timing, are we on a good pace for timing with your project, and when we'll have to cease operations at the DPW garage, or are you expecting a gap in between?
I'm hopeful that we can actually shift from DPW to this facility, or this property on Kennedy Road overnight, so that there would be no lapse in, in the ability for residents to bring brush to a site to drop that off, in discussions with the county, and kinda going through the secret process, if we can finalize this at the next legislative session on March 6th, it can then go to the county, be turned in to the county executive for the Friday, March 8th deadline, be introduced to county ledge the following week, discussed in, discussed later in March, and approved in April, with the idea that we'd be able to potentially start kinda construction and the earthwork come May 1st, and have it open and operational by, or shooting for June 1st, because the anticipated groundbreaking for the DPW facility would be, would be June 12th.
Okay, so that's the timeline, right? 'Cause you threw me off by saying overnight, so does that mean?
So, well, I'm hoping that, if, if we can have this facility and site ready, you know, to start using and having residents drop off on June 1st, that they could be dropping off up until the end of May at the current DPW site.
And then flipping over next day, that would be?
But I, I think to Bob's point, they're tracking.
Yes, yes.
The opening of this, plus, so it's, they're aligned, so there's no real gap in between shot off of the service at the existing location, and then 1775 Kennedy.
Correct.
Okay. And then, so it's not anything literally happening overnight, right?
No, we're anticipating that we could.
There'd be no disruption in service.
Correct, yes.
But it's still, we're looking at a three-month, assuming no hiccups with the county, et cetera.
Correct.
We don't have a draft agreement though, put together yet, so.
We're working on, yeah, we're working on that parallel with them. We're working on the final design at the same time, so.
That should.
And the county's been very supportive of this all along. I know we've had conversations from the county executive on down, so everybody seems very supportive and, you know, working well with the town. So we, we appreciate their, their support so far.
And I guess I shouldn't assume, but there'll be no cost associated with this agreement or is there some kind of?
I mean, the cost, I mean, for Eric and his team is the labor.
Correct, but I mean, an ongoing, there's not an ongoing.
And that's part of the agreement we're looking at is if we're building the infrastructure on their property, they get to keep it after we're done and that, you know, hopefully that's a, a benefit to both sides. They now have a road and an, an area to utilize and we obviously get the benefit of using it, you know, for that time period.
What's the cost of the infrastructure?
Most of it's just the, the equipment. So it's just going to be Eric and his crew, the dozer and, and the millings and the county said they've got the milling, so really there is no other infrastructure. It's just moving earth, bringing in millings to put down for the road.
So like fifty thousand and under?
I think the only other, I guess in addition to kind of the stone and the, the actual earthwork, we would be required to put a fence along just to keep, so that no one's showing up in the middle of the night and dumping tires, TVs, you know, anything, anything prohibited. So there would be a cost for the fence, but I'm, we're still trying to verify and confirm with the county as part of the design what portions they would want fenced or not. Not anticipating everything kind of surrounding, but at least the road frontage itself.
Okay, so, but aside from the infrastructure, there's, as part of the mutual relationship with the county, there's no utility fee on a monthly basis, that kind of thing?
No.
Okay.
All right. Any other comments, questions? If not, I'll turn back to Ms. Ivers. And way back in the beginning, you stated you were looking for a resolution that was longer than my short term memory can handle.
I'll make a, a motion for the town to again designate itself as lead agency and adopt, or I'll take the, the staff's recommendation to adopt this as a negative declaration to move forward.
Perfect.
Sort of prepare resolutions to vote for that.
Yes.
Okay.
Noted. Working on it already, in my head.
All right, we have a motion and a second. The clerk would call the roll.
Gary?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Agden?
Aye.
Tecklisch?
Aye.
Oh, aye.
All right, thank you all for that information. It's, it's great that we're going to be able to keep that service for our residents in line and without a gap. That's, that's great.
Let's see, we'll move on to action, item C. This will be Mr. Valentine, discussion on the tasks and requirements for an arborist, RFP for an arborist.
Thank you. So this was something that the board added to our budget this year. So we do have an allocated ten thousand dollars in our budget going towards an arborist this year. Looking to put an RFP out for that, starting in, in March. So just looking for input from the board if there's certain things you wanted to include. Obviously, we'd have them look at, you know, certain projects and, you know, weigh in on, you know, specific trees. The board had questions on, so we'd be going out, similar to, we have a landscape consultant. We've got somebody that does wetlands, having a consultant to our disposal that they can go out and look at things that, you know, staff, the board, you know, is interested in. But just before I went out for that, just want to make sure if there's anything specific that the board wanted to include in that. Obviously, I can put together a draft and once it's, you know, together, share that with the board and if that's sufficient, that's fine, but just wanted to bring it up. One, to make sure you're aware that we're going out for this and two, you know, if there's any specific items you wanted included in that.
I would be curious to see what the deliverables are going to be for, and I, I assume that you'll, you'll write that up.
Yep.
And the certifications that you'll require of the arborist, whether it's somebody with an existing company or if it's an independent consultant. I don't know if there is a requirement for either.
I think with some of each, as long as, you know, they are certified. I know we've reached out to other towns. Some have in the midst, with their DPW, they have somebody that is certified on their staff, you know, as part of an existing DPW. And I know we've got a member of our parks department that's working towards their certification, you know, which would be great. But then there's other companies, tree companies that have arborists and then obviously there's independent people that, you know, have them as well. So I can kind of put together some, some measures for that, share that with the board and then, you know, ask for your feedback if there's additional items to include.
And how long, like what terms are you looking at? Do you think you'll do it a one year agreement, two year?
Typically, we do two.
Okay.
This one, I may say, let's do one and see how much we use if there's something we're missing, so we're not, you know, locked in on one way or the other. So this one, maybe I'd say we do one on this one and then at the end of this year, we can kind of reevaluate where we're at. Did it meet our needs, meet the board's needs? And then we can, you know, re-up that for next year. Typically, with other agreements, we do it for two years agreement, just so we're not going out every, every other, you know, year with it. We kind of do a two year timeframe, come back and then revisit and then, you know, decide if we need to do a new RFP or, you know, update our consultant with that. So this one, I may recommend just one year, see where we're at at the end of it.
Right.
And once the budget comes up, we're going to have to talk, is ten thousand enough? Too much? You know, I think that's another thing we kind of need to look at and see where we are and if, if that's a reasonable amount, you know, for that as well.
The only things, as I read through it is, and I, I'm going to say it, I'm, I'm betting that you already know this, so I'll, I'll just share it anyways, is, you know, some type of tree inventory, a tree maintenance program. Where are there trees that are diseased? What do we need to know and making sure that that report is shared? And then working.
And that's, and that's, yeah, as we get into doing the, the, the tree inventory is a big part of the tree city, you know, that takes.
Right.
Communities' years, obviously, you know, doing that part of it. So that may be a bigger cost with that. So we'll have to kind of, you know, that a first lift and then kind of ongoing.
Understood. Good point.
All right, any other comments or questions?
I guess I don't.
Yeah.
I don't need a vote on this one. I just wanted to, feedback from the board on it, so thank you.
All right. Great, thank you. Move on to, still with Mr. Valentine, the Shadow Pines Development Bid Review.
So this, we did take our bids on February ninth. So this is the newly revised smaller infrastructure. We did come last year, subsequently revised it to kind of reduce the impact to the trees. We did get three bidders. Unfortunately, we did have an issue with one of them that they didn't acknowledge addendum number two. So addendum number two, if the board remembers, I asked this board to hold off and push out the bid date. We were revising the building structures. This includes the bathroom, this includes an outdoor shelter as well as a shed. So we were revising that, so that's what's in bid number two. So unfortunately, our low bidder didn't acknowledge that. So I'm speaking with council, I believe shared with the board, unfortunately, I don't think we can look at that they had a complete bid in, in this. But looking at their number and if they did incorporate the buildings, I think they would have been very much in line with the others. Don't know for sure, but I would think that they would have been very close to the others. So that leaves us, if the board, you know, so wants to move forward, the second bidder, Genesee Construction, so their base bid is just over two point nine million. And then we did bid two alternates for two inclusive playgrounds. This includes the rubberized material down, you know, the touch, the feel, the, you know, the narrow way typical elements all in that. So the company that bid it and we've been dealing with is the Miracle Group. So they were a sub consultant to it. They did the Webster Playground Location. They've done Kennedigwa, they've done a lot of ones in the area, so. And then we also bid out alternate three, which is lighting for the courts. Was not really intending for the board to act on that one, but just kind of wanted to know where that number stood. So we are having them install conduit, so if lights were ever desired. But the initial, you know, part, I think was just to get the, the base in, get the elements in and then, you know, decide whether we're adding the, the two alternates or not. So I've got kind of some, some numbers to run through where we are with the ARPA funds. So initially, the board awarded two million dollars or allocated, excuse me, not award, allocated two million dollars to this project. So one hundred and, one point six three million was for infrastructure, three hundred and seventy thousand was for pickleball, and then we have a grant for three hundred and fifty thousand for pickleball as well. So that comes from Senator Lunsford's office, they're allocating money towards pickleball. So that leaves us a little under where we are with our base bid. So for, we're at two point four million. So we need to look at, are we allocating, one, do we want to move ahead with the project? Are we allocating additional ARPA funds? We do have five hundred and fifty nine thousand remaining in ARPA funds that has been unallocated yet by this board. They can go to that, so that would get us to the base bid. So that's fully paid for. The alternate one and the alternate two for the playgrounds that the board wants to move ahead with that, we'd need to look at is whether we're allocating that out of the regular, coming out of the general fund balance or the rec trust fund is where that would be funded from. So I guess I'm throwing a couple of different things at you as one, are we going, are you comfortable with, you know, Genesee Construction? We had BME do an analysis, they went through, they're familiar with this company. They were comfortable with them on that. And then do we want to award the base bid? Alternate one, alternate two? So a couple of different items and just kind of looking for your thoughts and feedback on that.
So we are using ARPA funds for the pickleball?
For a portion of it, yes.
What was that?
So a portion of it, yes. So that was allocated by the, so originally of the two million dollars for the infrastructure and then a portion was going to pickleball out of that initial allocation. And then they say we did have a, you know, we do have a grant that is just for the pickleball piece.
Right, right, yeah. And I, I, I understand that was already decided. I, I will say I don't know that I would have agreed with that, but that's okay. I did have a question about, can I ask a question about the actual bid?
Sure.
So I understand Genesee's the lowest price, correct?
If.
Yet they also were the ones with the most kind of qualifications, if I understood this correctly.
Were most.
What wasn't covered? Fencing isn't covered, those type of things.
Yeah, they did have some, some elements. I mean, the, the playground should be all inclusive in those alternate prices.
Right.
And actually, the amount of fencing is actually smaller, so, you know, we left it up to Miracle. We're not experts in, in playground design. We left it up to them to design the playground. So we said, here's the elements we want in it, here's the must haves, here's the extras. They included all of that in there. So actually the fencing, that's why it's a little bit of a question, the fencing actually will get smaller because the playground area that we just kind of put a box on the map and said this is, I think, thirteen thousand square feet. Miracle people came back and said we can fit it in seven thousand square feet. So actually the fencing amount gets, gets smaller around that and then, so we've actually got a smaller footprint area to put the playground on.
Right. What I'm trying to understand is, is Genesee listed just the base bid, their lower price, but when I look at the documentation for their clarifications, they're talking about not, that cost doesn't include construction fence, a chain link fence around it. And I'm just, is this an apples to apples? Is Genesee and Pooler the same? Because I didn't see those same exceptions with Pooler.
Talking with a consultant, they were comfortable with it. You know, construction fencing, you know, it's up to them and how they want to build it. So, you know, each one does a little bit different on how their means and methods to get to, you know, the end result of how they put it together.
Okay.
So I, I read that as while it's being developed, that they weren't going to, okay.
Yeah.
Because what I'm saying is, is just the one, there's a different price. I understand Genesee's lower in price, but they also had a lot of, a long list of what they're not going to do and what they are including, which made me think, well, does that mean Pooler is including those in their cost estimate? And therefore, Genesee's might actually be higher or might run into issues.
Yeah. I looked at it, you know, it, it's kind of a means and methods of during construction. If you, some want to have every bit of it fenced, others are fine, you know, having, you know, that, that part of it open. It's however they're comfortable doing their, their construction.
I, I can say, excuse me, Pooler recently did, a couple of years ago now, they were the ones that were awarded the rawest field expansion project. And as part of that project, they did not provide or have any construction fencing around that.
They may have just not have listed that or, you know.
Right, understood.
It's very possible that Genesee Construction's gotten burned on the construction fencing making with other clients, assuming it was covered. And so maybe they go out of their way to say.
Assuming it was required, it's not required by us. If they want to have it, then that's.
I, I think, I mean, because we're looking at, at the summary PDF, right?
Correct.
And, and, and I mean, it's not like we're experts in some of these like exceptions either or to understand if they are true exceptions. So construction fence is an example, but for example, where it says no removal of buried objects, foundations, no de-watering, like I don't know what de-watering is, you know, but does Pooler, did their bid include that as part of the program description? Is that something that the town should consider as a requirement? Does everything listed in the general, like should that be counted scored against Genesee? Like that's the feedback we're looking for.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't have issues, I'm not expecting that there is no overhead wires in the area, there is no.
Yeah, there's no.
There's other, the elements that they kind of went through, I didn't have concern with. We've done some deep holes in the area. You know, we don't allow them to bury that stuff. So, you know, some of the items that they went through or the assumptions, you know, I was comfortable with those. I don't think we can have those issues out there. So I don't think those will be, as you said, maybe they've gotten burned in the past and they just want to make sure they're very clear about it, but.
Yeah. You provided a better explanation than I did, I appreciate that.
I, I wonder, you know, I think it's important for us to like review and talk about these things, but because Supervisor Leanhouse isn't here tonight and, and this, if we do, and I guess we could at least move forward with, with preparing the resolution, I, I just don't want to commit to a March sixth date without really hearing his, his feedback. I don't know how others feel.
What is our timeframe for the bids to be either accepted or rejected?
Yeah, I believe we have forty-five days. So February ninth was our, our bid dates. We've got forty-five days to take action. So we could carry this over to the March work session. It's likely we'd have to just do a special ledge session at the end of that meeting. So if we could follow up with any questions from the board, talk about it on the March, I think it's what, March seventeenth is our next work session and then do a special ledge to award at the end of that, just to make sure we keep within that forty-five days.
I'm sorry, when's the, what was the date of February fifteenth?
February ninth was the, was the bid and I think we have a work session on the seventeenth, the FOMO.
So forty-five days from February ninth is March twenty-fifth. And I actually have the calendar up. We've got a work session on the twentieth and the next ledge is for three. So we'd have to, and again, if, if others feel comfortable, I mean, I, I, I'm not opposed to having a resolution prepared. It's, the concern being we would just end up tabling it, you know? So we could, we could schedule it for March twentieth and then commit to the special ledge session that same night. So we could, we could schedule it for March 20th and then commit to the special ledge session that same night.
Yeah, that would work.
Actually, well, I don't know if, if, I guess, now that I'm digging through, I mean, if he, if he had an objection or something, then it, it wouldn't get us enough time.
Maybe prepare the resolution for the next meeting. And if you end up tabling it, you've still got time to react, but.
Okay, okay.
You know, because then you can have the discussion be at the, at the 25th work session if necessary and then adopt it. You know, do a special ledge session at the end still, but.
Okay. So here, here, here are my thoughts and feeling. I, I know Bob might recall, but I was, when the vote came out to award ARPA funds to this project, I was alone vote for no. It's my understanding for those that they have to be allocated towards a certain type of project. And I just had a different interpretation of ARPA funding. But again, it, this is, this, the town has committed to it. I am therefore supportive of it. I'm not going to be a roadblock only because of, of personal feelings. Again, I'm looking for ways, like the inclusive playground, how can I best optimize at least the decision, the collective decision of the board as well as a town for the benefit of all residents? So with that being said, I would, for those reasons, want to go with, with the lowest responsive bidder. And that being me personally leaning towards Genesee Construction. I am very sympathetic to Rochester Earth. I'm, I'm sorry that it, that the bid process didn't work out for them. But out of fairness to the bidding process and general business practices of the town, as well as Genesee Construction and Pooler, I don't think it's fair to reopen the bid or extend the bid because then it's no longer competitive. So I would go with the lower base bid. Because again, I, being very fiscally conservative with the use of the ARPA funds, I would be totally opposed to allocating any more of ARPA funds to this project. I would instead like it to go to sewer lines or something that, I don't know, goes to actual infrastructure and necessary services for all residents. I would, and again, with the phased building of the project. So with the alternate playgrounds and additional court lighting, that was always, if I recall, the discussions contemplated that being phased. But at least I, I would, for purposes of keeping the project moving forward, I'm okay committing to those playgrounds. And I think, again, it would just be nice if we are building this area, developing an area where we've heard from many, many residents of just wanting to keep it an open space. I think I don't want it just angled to one type of activity. We've got the disc golf there, we've got cross country there, we've got a lot of other activities. So I would want to have it appeal to all types of persons, all types of families and all types of activity for maximum enjoyment by as many persons as possible. So for me, I would move forward with Genesee Construction with the lower, lower responsive bid. I would be supportive of having the inclusive playground, but I would like to hold on court lighting as part of this immediate phase build or, or commitment to what's being priced for phased building.
Mark, can you just verify under the court lighting, those prices reflected lights being installed or just the, okay?
That's lights being installed. The conduit was in the base bid.
Okay.
Running the conduit for it, so they're there in the future.
So provisions would still be underneath the new surfaces?
It's there. I just wanted to get a price saying, hey, while we're doing bids, let's just get a price for lights.
So saves a lot of energy later. Okay.
Can I just clarify? So you're, you're supportive of alternate one and two? So the one was playground for two to five year olds and then one was for five to 12 year olds. So you're allocating for one and two?
Yes, yes.
And then, so we're not allocating any more, any more ARPA funds to it, so we would find.
No, no, that's me personally.
Okay, but I'm just trying to make sure, because we'll need to allocate funds either from the general fund, no matter what, if we're going with those. Or the, or the rec trust fund, but just making sure where the board stands, just as I wrote up the resolution. You always indicate where the money's coming from.
Well, before you put pen to paper, you know, like, why, why am I one of the other three?
Yeah, just making sure where I know you are and then we can hear where the rest of the board is.
All right. I want to understand, and I did not read up on this leading to the meeting, so I apologize. But we are looking at two playgrounds, correct?
Correct.
And it's based on age difference.
Correct.
But both are inclusive.
Correct, yes.
And Councilwoman Lee, you said that you did support the bid with both. I just want to make sure I understood that. I also support going forward, but I will agree that I do not want to use ARPA funds. I think there are other things that we can find, infrastructure. And perhaps we can look at that. And if we can't find anything to use those funds for, we can always come back. And maybe that is something else. But I've heard from a lot of residents on flooding issues and infrastructure issues. So perhaps we can find something to use that money for.
And then just as a reminder to the board, I believe that the ARPA funding has to be allocated by the end of this year, just as.
Oh, I've got stuff in mind. Don't worry. Use it. I'm just channeling our, our controller, Barbara Chirido, who was going to want to.
Do they have to be allocated or do they have to be?
Allocated.
Allocated.
Understood.
All right, great. Councilman Barry, any additional comments?
I am in agreement that we should not use the ARPA funds for this.
Do you have a leaning either way for Genesee or Pooler or none or?
I think that Genesee makes the most sense, yeah.
And you're good with alternates, adding in alternates one and two?
Absolutely.
Okay, and we're holding off on alternate three? Okay.
Can I, can I, I'm sorry, I should have stipulated or questioned this earlier. Have we done work with Genesee? Have, do we have a history with Genesee?
We, we, we've done work with Pooler. I've not done Genesee, worked with Genesee in my time. Our engineer, BME, has. They were very pleased with their work. They've worked with them on, on other projects in the area. We've personally done work with Pooler, as Eric had shared. We did the, the new fields that are just about to open at Rothfuss Park. So those are the most recent project they've done with us.
Okay.
I'll chime in that I'm familiar with Genesee Construction from private development in my previous position at a different town. And they completed their project on time and I believe within budget, then we had no issues for the building department.
All right. I guess I'll entertain a motion. I think we've heard from all the, the board members.
Are you comfortable with moving forward the resolution that, that way?
Yep.
Okay. And I'm sure Jeff, with his development background, will, might have had experience with Genesee or Pooler or have feelings, so.
And maybe Peter, does, does the, the piece about the additional ARPA funds, you know, our desires not to use that have to be stipulated? As Mark was saying, that the funds have to be kind of determined where they're coming from.
Well, I think that the resolution, it strikes me that the resolution should, since, I don't think we allocated enough funds to cover the entire amount. So as part of that drafting of the resolution, Mark will have to work with Barbara to make sure that there's enough funds appropriated. And so what we've heard is that we don't want to use ARPA funds. So we'll use those other sources to, to make sure we have the money as all as part of that due diligence and preparing that resolution.
Is the board okay with that if we leave it in the hands of the comptroller and Mark to identify a source other than the ARPA funds? Or do we want to have more?
I emailed back and forth with her today. She said, we do have a general fund available. We also have rec trust fund available. So there are other sources and she seemed comfortable with using either one of those, but just want to make sure where the board was.
And again, how much is that approximately?
The rec trust fund is $620,000.
What would we be taking from it?
It would be proportional amount. I mean, we'd be, we'd, we'd use up all of that if we were using all of it towards this. You know, we can use a, a portion of that and then the rest could come from general fund.
Okay.
My preference would be to use it from the general fund.
And leave the rec.
Leave the rec.
That's.
That would be my.
Okay, thank you.
But again, I, you know, if there's a, a good reason to use it from the, the rec, like if some of the dollars were tied to grants and had to be used by a certain date or something like that, you know, if there's a compelling argument, I'm definitely open to it. But given just the general balances of, of the two accounts, my preference would be to pull from general.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you, board.
So we are looking for a motion. Not to someone. A warning for a resolution to award the bid to Genesee Construction with alternate one and two included, alternate three on hold for this phased building with the funds, the delta of the funds already allocated from ARPA as well as the grant from the, for the delta to be moved or allocated from the general fund with the understanding that no additional ARPA funds be allocated to this project.
All right.
Does that cover it?
That covers it.
Sounds good to me.
Yep.
All right. So we have a motion by Councilperson Lee. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Barry. We'll ask for the rule.
Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Tyklish?
Aye.
All aye.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much for all that information. We'll move on to action item E, Shoe Craft Road Sidewalk Discussion. Mr. Valentine, still.
So this was brought to the board as a petition, I think it was in probably late 2022. The neighbors petitioned the board on Shoe Craft Road. It came in and said, we, residents of Shoe Craft are supportive of sidewalks. We all want it on the north side. So the board at that time said, let's go forward with it. Subsequent to that, we did get survey work done. We did the in-house design for the sidewalks. Once that was completed, kind of listing at the bottom, we sent letters to the neighbors about it. We scheduled a Saturday walkthrough, walked with the neighbors to explain the project. We sent the maps of, you know, what the impacts are, what it is, you know, on their individual lot. And then kind of followed up from there to kind of get a, a sense of where everybody is in the neighborhood. Because as we walked, there were some neighbors that were, well, I originally signed, but now I'm not interested. Or I see that, you know, a tree needs to be taken down. You know, so my wife, husband, somebody will sign, but I'm not supportive. Heard, heard a couple of those.
Fights ensued.
So we kind of shook out and go, okay, this is no longer unanimous vote on having sidewalks. Everybody then said, well, can we have it on the other side of the road? Unfortunately, there's wetlands on the other side of the road, so I can't fill the wetlands, you know. So it, it has to be on this side of the road if this is where we're going. So we initially looked at this as a phased project, starting at Five Mile, since we, the board also awarded or moved ahead with going south on Five Mile from Shoe Craft down to Rothfuss Park. And then there's a small portion south of Rothfuss Park to fill in. We're working on those. The county DOT just signed off on our designs for those, so those are in for construction this summer. This was also supposed to be moving ahead for the summer, but given now that 50% of the people said yes, some of the people definitely said no. And then we've got a lot of people saying, well, if I'm the last and only person, I'll sign, but I'm somewhere in the middle on it. So wanted to come back to the board and see if the board was still supportive. I don't know about building a sidewalk with fits and starts. That's really not great for anybody to have, you know, bits of sidewalk all over.
When did this come as a petition to the board? I don't recall this at all.
It was maybe 2022?
I was here, I remember, coming from transportation committee.
Yeah, it came through and, you know, the board received it and said, yeah, this is what we want to do.
A lot more support for sure then.
Allocate it. I mean, we had a list and a, you know, to move ahead with it. Now, once we've kind of got into the actual design and show where the sidewalk needs to go, you know, obviously the, the support isn't quite there. So wanted to bring it back to the board, see where the board stood with it. We did a cost estimate of it. I mean, it's, would be our entire budget from, we rolled it over from 2023 into this year. But whether that money is spent here or better allocated somewhere else under the sidewalk fund. But did want to get the board's, you know, thoughts and input on this. Typically, coming up, typically March, April of each year, I would sit with the board anyway and talk about sidewalks we've heard about. And then we schedule a public hearing, allow the public to come in, share their thoughts. We did this, I think, last year, the year before. We had $2.2 million worth of requests. We have a $200,000 budget. So obviously, we have more requests than, than budget. So there's a lot of interest out there. There's a lot of people that are looking for sidewalks. Whether there's a, a better spot to spend our money. Right now, the sidewalk design is done, so it's not going away. We can just kind of set it on the, on the shelf for a little bit and then see if the neighborhood turns over, if things change, if neighbors get together and talk about it and, you know, come back to a consensus.
Like you said, the worst case would be if we end up having these little stubs. And I know that's always been a difficult.
We already hear that a lot. I mean, developers are required to put them in on their properties. They install them from their property line to property line and that leaves us gaps and then we go back and fill in gaps. But a new project, you know, typically we don't like to start a new project and then have, you know, gaps right from the beginning.
Sidewalk that goes nowhere, yeah.
We, we hear that a lot and.
Yeah. Any thoughts from the board?
The, the individuals that brought the petition, that requested them, have any of those individuals changed their mind to say no?
There was one person that was the main impetus for it, that, you know, spent a lot of time, went door to door, went around. They're still very supportive of it. Obviously, their neighbors have kind of wavered a little bit since, since that time. So we've done, and there's still three people we've not heard from. We've sent letters, we've done door hangers, we literally walked and knocked on doors. You know, so we've tried to do multiple means and measures to, to reach everybody to kind of get their opinion. But you can see the three gray parcels are the ones, whether maybe they're rentals or something, but we've not heard from, from those. They say we took a Saturday, you know, walked each individual property with the neighbors and said, here's where the sidewalk's going to go. Here's what the impact is, here's, you know, what mayor, how it all lays out. So I think we've tried to do our best to reach out to everybody to fully explain it.
Kind of reminds me, I think the last time we had something similar was maybe Alta Vista or Old Pond, somewhere in that neighborhood. It was almost a similar, we had a petition, we had a list that seemed like everybody was in favor. And then kind of the tide changed for whatever reasons. And I think we ended up putting it on hold because we didn't see the same support that we initially had. I don't know if that's similar in comparison to what, what we dealt with in that particular neighborhood.
Huntington Meadow, I think you were on the board at that time, or, you know, Huntington Meadow, they came with a petition, everybody was on board. We surveyed it, we designed, we built it, it exists today. And, you know, there was some go forward and, you know, it was smooth. This one maybe needs a little more time.
Would it be wise to, you're going to present us with a list here in a few months to?
Yeah, I mean, we'll pull up with the requests we have thus far. And then I say, I was going to work with supervisor to set up public hearing dates, whether March, April. We typically do a public hearing, put it out to the public at wide, saying, where else do you want to have sidewalks? You know, then people come back with thoughts and requests and, you know, we can reallocate, you know, these funds to something else if, you know, if that's desired by the board or we can continue to try to, you know, push ahead on this one and.
So we don't have currently anything on deck?
We do have three sidewalk locations for this year that are going in. So we have sidewalks in front of Gentles Market. There's a small piece left after Dolomite did their piece going up Penfield Road. We have a portion on Plank Road by Crown Point, so between Shoe Craft and Five Mile. And then we have Five Mile Line, south by the Tall Tree, not Tall Tree, Lone Oak neighborhood going north. There's a gap piece in there and then going from Rothfuss Park, Embry Road, north to Shoe Craft on the east side. So we have those pieces of sidewalk that are moving forward and will be constructed this summer.
But is the funding that's, that's at least estimated here, is that all, for the projects on deck, do they have separate funding or?
So this was allocated 2023 funding and then we rolled that over, so it was an encumbered money into this year.
Okay.
We can then spend 23's money and then encumber this money into next year to pay for additional projects. So it is a very dedicated fund, so we would keep the money within the sidewalk fund, so it wouldn't get spent on something else. You know, we can roll that over if we find another location and then, you know, that needs additional funds. But that was, the board, you know, had, this didn't get done in 23, so allocated to roll that over into 24. We were going to do this along with the Five Mile, the Plank and then the, the Penfield Road. So that's going to spend 24's money. This was 23's funds. And again, that money could be, you know, rolled over or allocated to a different project. It wouldn't, wouldn't leave the sidewalk fund. We keep it within the sidewalk.
I'm not trying to take your money, Mark.
I like my, I like my, I like my sidewalks.
It's tough because the, the or and against are, you know, it would have been perfect if it's like, we'll just end it there.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, the, the neighbor that went house to house did a great job and got the neighbors involved. I mean, we've done the design, so, you know, I'd hate to see a project go away. But also, you know, we've got a definite no's. We need easements from the neighbors in this instance because of the way the drainage is. There's roadside catch basins, then there's utility poles. So that puts us on the backside of the utility poles. So I need easements from neighbors, so it's not, some, you're working wholly in the right of way. So it's town road, county road, you're working in a right of way, you have some discretion. This one, I need easements from, from neighbors. So if they're a flat out no and they won't grant an easement, unless we go eminent domain, there's not a lot we can do. And then even then, typically, we need some grading release, because even if you're working in the right of way, as you blend in the grass, you know, we work with neighbors to get a grading release to allow us to kind of blend it into their property. There are some trees that need to come down, you know, is typical. We said we'll replace them one to ones. We're not, you know, no net loss of trees, but there are trees and costs that, you know, based on the location that need to be removed.
So are the no's a variety, are the no's a variety between the, I don't want my trees cut down and the easement? Or is it?
The one that I talked to that's, that carries highlight in that area was just, I moved to the country to, I lived somewhere else. I had sidewalks. I moved out here because I don't want sidewalks. I don't want people in this area. So I distinctly moved out here.
Never want it.
Never, never want it. You know, I moved out here because there are no sidewalks and I like the more rural character, so.
I might have moved here after April of 2022, which is when this was contemplated.
So, yeah, I don't know if some has turned over and changed in the neighborhood or just as once, you know, we show our design and show where the sidewalk has to go and it's more impact than they thought. You know, it becomes more reality then than signing a petition, so.
But the reality is too, I mean, if, if you've got to get easements or get, use eminent domain, I mean, it's like, because you can't all work in the, in the right of way, that, that presents a little bit of a problem when you have a situation where there's some people against it.
Right. So if it was wholly in the right of way and no easements were needed, if the town really felt strongly about moving forward with sidewalks, you can move forward with sidewalks. It's county right of, or town right of way. However, this.
Similar in Five Mile Line. We're working wholly within the right of way. Obviously, we'll communicate with the neighbors, but it's, you know, it's. We don't need their, their permission here, based on stuff that's out there. I need easements from those neighbors, so. And we don't need a decision tonight if the board wants to go out and drive it, look at it?
No, I mean, I, I'm very familiar with that area. I used to take it up for, for work all the time. You know, I think, I, I truthfully don't remember the petition, but probably if, you know, if I felt like everyone was in favor of it, I was like, okay, you know? So I probably didn't have very strong feelings then. But that area is very rural and it doesn't really, Shoe Craft, until you get closer up, up north towards Empire, right? Like, it doesn't really connect to anything and definitely with the wetlands to the south of it. Like, I, you know, I, I don't see for me as much value add to force a sidewalk in a way, in a, in an area that is not going to be very high foot traffic, that I don't think is going to be utilized. Like, it doesn't connect to a park or, you know, or a school, right? So I, I guess if we have other projects on deck where we can free up this funding and allocate there and with it, you know, for the reasons council stated as well, like I, it's, it's not one that I really want to force and, and disrupt the, the area.
Let's say, we have the design done, so within a year or two, they come back and there's more support. Nothing says that we, you know, can't revisit and come back to it. So that, let's say, the survey work's done, the design work's done, we can.
What do others think?
Put it on the shelf and.
I, the eminent domain, I just, for a sidewalk, that's not something I want to even consider. If this is the people's land and we would have to go in, they have the right to say no. I would be in favor of letting these neighbors know that here's where we are, this is the situation, and if something does change in a year, like you said, we have the designs, we can reconsider.
I agree.
I just don't see how we do it, go forward with it when it's not our land, it's not our property.
Agreed.
Okay, so, I mean, Kevin, anything else to add, or?
No, I agree with that, you know, the benefit of it is, really isn't there.
And I can actually see the neighbors who want it, right?
I mean, we will be adding, we will be, yeah, and they try to, they're walking, and we will be adding sidewalks on Five Mile, so maybe once that Five Mile sidewalk is in this summer, then maybe the neighbors will see the benefit of it, and maybe that'll change some opinions. Most people I talk to want to get to the park, they have kids, you know, if they can walk down a sidewalk or ride their bike down a sidewalk and get down to Rothfuss Park, that's great. So maybe once we install the sidewalks along Five Mile this summer, then.
You go south on that.
You go south, and then maybe the rest of the neighbors will see the benefit at that point in time, and that may sway some of the thought and come back next year, come back later on and see, now we're supportive and we can come back to it.
And I can see how the individuals that want it on that road may, you know, they can connect to the other communities, the other little neighborhoods there, kids riding bikes. I can understand the desire, but unfortunately, without the agreement, I don't see that we can do anything.
The most critical persons, right, at the corner, where it would be safest for a sidewalk, right, around the curve, they're the no's. So, I mean, even the person right on Five Mile, where you can connect right on the sidewalks to Five Mile is a maybe. So I feel like the ones at the most critical junctures of the corners, right, and any access to like, or the option to the neighborhood? So I, I'm sorry, where is the border to Webster? I know it's like Shoe Craft, somewhere along there, right?
You've got to go north of Plank, so, yeah, way up, Shoe Craft loops around.
About a mile north.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so if you don't have a, you all have the votes for resolution to move forward, so is this at this point kind of no action?
Yeah, I mean, I guess we'll just document in the minutes that the board was, you know, not supportive of moving ahead at this time in this area. We'll come back with a public hearing date for, you know, reach out to the public for new sidewalk locations. You'll hear from people in those spots, we can investigate those. As we've done in the past, we'll do cost estimates, you know, analysis of those, come back to the board, and then we may have petitions from other neighborhoods that come in and say, you know, we want sidewalks, and, you know, then the board can decide where to, you know, reallocate those funds.
And may I just ask that the minutes accurately reflect that the board gave deference to the lack of unity in that neighborhood, the lack of any majority in favor of it? So we did not want to force a sidewalk into a neighborhood, please?
Thank you, appreciate you, appreciate the discussion.
Thank you for visiting them and talking with them and the color-coded map.
That came from Amy Owen, so I'll give her the credit for that. I didn't color-code the map or gather that together.
All right, well, thank you. We'll give Mr. Valentine a break for a minute, and we'll move on to action, item F. Mr. Tate, finally get to you.
Thank you.
DPW Garage Project and some construction administration discussion.
Yes, thank you. So we're currently wrapping up the last little bit of the design for the DPW garage facility. With that, in discussions with MRB, and really even going back to early last year, when they started the project, they did have in their initial proposal for the design, they did indicate that the construction administration and construction observation were to be determined as part of that, because really felt that rather than trying to kind of throw a dart at the wall and guess on what it would actually take to kind of go through the, I guess, the construction phase of the building, let's finalize the design, actually know the exact size, the location, what else would be, you know, incorporated with the site, to be able to kind of sharpen pencils and make sure that that number in their estimate, their proposal is accurate as possible. With that, they have come back with the design, you know, nearing the end, they have come back with the proposal for the construction administration and construction observation services. With that said, the construction administration, they did break it up between the two. Construction administration would include the, all of the pre-construction meetings throughout the duration of the project, up to 60 site visits. They'd be able to review all of the different disciplines. If any of the contractors had any issues or any questions, they can help address those. They'd be able to process all of the RFIs, any submittals, any, you know, contractor schedules, payment applications, be able to review everything to make sure that, you know, what the town's paying for and getting is what we're entitled to. And also that we're, you know, not, I guess, not being charged for anything that was already included, that there's no, you know, extras that shouldn't have been. You know, they will help with the, I guess, the preparation of all of the bids to make sure that everything is reviewed appropriately, and that we're making, you know, as good of a decision as to who we choose for each of the different prime contracts as possible. Additionally, the construction observation, so that was more, I guess, more so the inspection portion of the construction. So they're anticipating, based on the size and scope of the work with this facility, that it would be just shy of 3,000 hours worth of construction observation and about 2,000, or I'm sorry, 200 hours for a construction manager on the site. They did indicate that, or did list what their hourly billing rates are for that in the 2024 year, knowing that the project is anticipated to be approximately 26 months. And if started in June of, June of this year, hoping to kind of wrap things up in early August of 2026. With that said, the fees, or I guess the cost that they came up with for the construction observation is at $979,500, and the construction observation is $379,450. The total between those is about 1.56, I'm sorry, 1.36 million. That was allocated in the original anticipated estimate for the overall building. And I, so I guess what I'm sharing is to make sure that this board's comfortable with that, or if you, there's anything additional that you'd like to see added, included, any questions about this, or if I can, would be preparing a resolution for the next meeting to authorize the supervisor to sign.
Okay, I'm now to construction.
Sure.
Whatsoever, by any stretch of imagination. So this 1.3 approximately million dollars is, in a nutshell, to make sure the construction company does a good job.
Correct.
1.3 million?
Yes.
Is that, is that typical?
Isn't there, Eric and Mark, isn't there generally a percentage of a project that kind of correlates to this specific professional services, if I remember correctly?
And you can tell me, Linda.
I mean, unfortunately, it's, I mean, unfortunately, it's, it is a high number, but, yeah, it is based on a proportion of, I mean, they're the clerk of the works, they take every smittle in, they're doing the field inspections and, you know, following up on all of that stuff, so Eric's got to do his day job, you know, running the other stuff, so it just would fall to a staff member somehow otherwise to do this, and whether we even had the expertise to do all of that, but it's just above and beyond the stuff that, I mean, we had a construction admin for the bathroom out here, and I'm trying to remember how much that was, but that was 35, 40,000, just for the small bathroom, not even, you know, near the size and scope of this, but it definitely was beneficial to us. They're, you know, tracking every smittle that comes in, the material type, the colors, the, you know, all the stuff and keeping it together.
Like a percentage of like 8% or something like that, which is probably similar to this ballpark.
Yep, it's usually 8 to 10%.
Usually, it's up to 10%, you know, sometimes it creeps higher, yeah, of the total cost of the project. So that's why you get a little sticker shock.
So actually, I had a question. So you said these fees were not built into the estimated construction?
No, they were part of the overall construction, I guess, project estimate.
Okay, so I, and this is like from April 2022? This is originally when it was presented with MRB? And so I know that there were like small discrepancies, but again, it's now 2024, so I want to understand. The estimated construction, including contingency for the 26 truck highway garage building, which is what we had authorized, right, is approximately 19 million?
Correct.
And then, I am sorry, I know you don't have the benefit of seeing this, but not quizzing you, so I have it as estimated construction, including contingency, is 19 million. Estimated soft costs were 15%, approximately 2.8 million. So the 1.36 isn't too far off from that?
Correct.
So I guess what I'm trying to understand is, like, thank you, MRB, for now detailing closer to the project, but does this, does this then change what we had capped the project in 2022 or understood as the ceiling estimate? You know, and you don't have to get the answer now. I guess for me, it's, so long as the end dollar amount, and again, I know 2022 were estimates, but.
I'd say the biggest change in, I think it was between, I guess, MRB, kind of looking at some other projects, but also with having campus construction as an independent kind of cost estimator, help review everything. They had some concerns over the contingency. So originally, we were anticipating a $25 million total cost of the project. Based on that, they actually made the recommendation to bump that to 30 million, and that's what we did the, so that was included within the, I guess, the bond authorization was a project up to that amount. We're hoping that bids come in far below and that we, that hopefully 25 is still the magic number. But just in case, we did the bond authorization for up to 25 million, and still anticipating that the, I think up to 25 million for the bond authorization, anticipating that the town was still going to contribute at least 5 million cash for the total to be up to 30.
Because we have some money in reserve.
Correct, in assigned general fund balance for, allocated towards this.
Okay, and I saw that they are now estimating 26 months, and we had an original set break ground in April 2024 with an estimated 1.5 years.
So the 1.5 years would be for the, I guess, the main garage itself, the 26 months would be for the full site, kind of the ribbon cutting at the end, saying that everything is done, the last contractor can drive out of the parking lot and away. So it's all of the outbuildings, the, you know, the existing building, the reconstruction of those outbuildings, kind of the final parking lot paving.
Removal of everything from the existing.
Correct.
Is included in that, right?
Yes.
Can I jump in with a question?
No, no, no.
So this is curiosity question and then process question. Talks about the site visit with the owner prior to one-year warranty period, talks about final walkthrough with owner. Who is considered the site owner?
The town of Penfield.
Right, but like, so when you do the walkthrough, who's going to say, yes, this is correct?
It'll be a combination of our building department inspectors, myself, you know, Mark from engineering staff, it'd be a number of town employees.
Okay, like I said, just curious.
It'll be an army of town employees.
Notice it shouldn't be.
It'll be our facility staff.
Yeah, good job.
Right, right. But then we'll get, the board would get those reports that will say, yes, we did the walkthrough, and now we're still in that one-year warranty, we're about to do the walkthrough, we'll give you a report.
Yeah. And I can also just like to point out with the construction observation, so the 2,960 hours anticipated for the construction observer is not for someone to be there full-time, eight hours a day, every single day. Certainly understanding when they're doing site work, it's going to take, there's quite a bit of site work to do, it's going to take time as they're erecting the steel for the building, they're going to need to be, to go slow, just to make sure that they're doing everything safely. So kind of anticipating there may be some portions of the project where the construction observer is on site more often, there may be some spots where they check in every once in a while when they're pouring concrete, they don't need to sit there and watch concrete cure. If they're painting rooms, they don't need to have someone sit there and watch paint dry. So that was kind of what they anticipated between what the, what myself and other DPW staff felt, that we would be able to contribute towards the observation and ensuring that everything is done correctly, and what they felt would be above and beyond and additionally needed.
Okay, and how old is the original building? Are we looking at the MVPs?
So it was originally constructed in the early to mid 1950s.
Okay, so that's might be an issue.
Very little, actually, because there has been, we did do a pre-demolition survey of that, a hazardous investigation. There was a little bit found in a small section of pipe insulation wrap, but for the vast majority of the building, it was surprisingly clean.
All right, take it.
Eric, with a project this size, I'm guessing change orders are going to be a regular discussion. What's the process for that from the town's perspective? Is that something the supervisor will be involved in with any potential changes, or MRB, or a combination of both? If you could just highlight how that.
So I'd say it's going to somewhat depend on what the cost is. Certainly, if it's a significant change order to the order of, you know, tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars, it's not something that I would feel comfortable making myself, nor do I think, you know, that the supervisor should by himself. I think that, you know, at that point, it would be something to come back before this board to make any decision. I don't know, and maybe Mark or Carrie, I don't know if you know what the, I guess, as far as other projects, what if there is a, or what the threshold is for the supervisor's, I guess, discretion for change orders?
I believe we just updated that at $10,000.
That's what the resolution was.
Yeah.
Right, sometimes the change orders are just as simply like a supply change, and so there's no material cost in, you know, change, or change in cost, per se, but something doesn't match a spec book, and so they really have to bring it to the town's attention so that somebody doesn't point it out.
Yeah, something that matches the original, you know, as long as they can prove the spec is the same, it's still a change order, but it's an approved equivalent.
Right.
So there is no cost change, it's just either supply chain timing, something doesn't come in, but yeah, the supervisor can authorize up to $10,000 once it's above that, you know, and come back to this board.
All right.
And again, part of the construction administration that would, any change orders would be submit, you know, directly to and through MRB. They would then make the recommendation, whether they felt that it was needed, it should be considered or not.
Great. All right, any other questions or discussion? So are you looking for?
So I guess I would, if the board's supportive, I can prepare a resolution. I'll additionally ask MRB to, just to update the proposal itself, as it does indicate supervisor draw currently, I can ask them to make that minor modification, and I can prepare a resolution for the next meeting to allow the supervisor to sign.
Do we need that?
I think people need a motion for that.
Yes.
All right, entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that allows Department of Public Works to move forward with a resolution for our March meeting to enable our supervisor to approve.
Subject to council's approval.
Subject to council's approval.
All right. Motion is made by Councilperson Taglish, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilman Barry, if the clerk would call the roll.
Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Taglish?
Aye.
Oh, aye.
All right, thank you.
Can I just ask for, I'm okay with the resolution, not trying to rescind that. Can, in time for the March 6? Can, in time for the March 6th, with the updates from MRB, can you just let us know again? I just don't want the bottom line to be, bottom dollar amount to change from the estimate drastically. I understand probably with inflation in two years' time that there's going to be some percentage of a change.
Sure.
But I just don't want to, because there's a point of no return, right? Once we authorize it, they break ground. It's like, oh, no, now it's too expensive. We're going to have to keep going. I just don't want the.
And I can also say, so part of the, so part of what we've authorized MRB to do so far is not only the design of the building, but also to have campus construction come in with a cost estimate at the kind of 50% design phase, as well as the 95% design phase. Campus is currently working on that right now with the idea that I should have those numbers back and want to say in the next three weeks. And was anticipating bringing that before this board to say, you know, the independent cost estimator has reviewed the final plans. This is what they anticipate that overall cost estimate to be prior to going out for bid.
Okay.
So I will, I'll have.
No, for real until.
Oh, sure.
Sure, but I'll have. Yes, I'll have as close as I can physically get and anticipating that for the next work session. Or in advance of the works, next work session. And the project schedule is anticipated to actually go out for bid on March 20th with the idea that bids would be due back on April 20, Monday, April 29th, and would be reviewed into May, awarded mid to third week of May, and break ground June 12th.
Oh, that's right, June 12th, that's right. Okay.
Yes.
And can I ask, I meant to say also, I know, I know, I'm sure this, the presentation is still like available somewhere on the website, but just for the convenience of Councilpersons Barry and Teglesh, can you also provide an email copy for them in time for the vote, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
All right, great. Anything else? All right, move on to roof replacements, still with Mr. Tate.
So this is, I guess, a mix of kind of informational and action. In every year, as we're working on preparing the DPW and specifically the facilities department budget, we do look at, I guess, one of the account lines that we have is specifically roof replacements. In last year, when we were putting that together, we did allocate, and we've kind of had in our plan, there's a, the restroom back kind of by the circle area here in Vetchens Memorial Park was what we were anticipating for doing a roof replacement on this year. This is not the picture. So the picture, and that's fine. The picture that Kerry just had pulled up is actually the building that the town owns and the school district has been utilizing at Channing Philbrick Park. I bring up that within the budget, we were anticipating the roof replacement on, and kind of the budget line.
Forgive me, so which part of the building did you want me to?
Nope, you're good. Pull up the first one again. Thank you.
The one I just happened?
Yes.
You switched your conversation? Okay, thank you. I'm doing a terrible job of being vanna tonight. I apologize.
So we're anticipating and still feel the need to do the, kind of the restroom roof replacement within the park. However, over the last few weeks, between the winds, the heavy rains, we've noticed that there is a leak in this roof. It is a town-owned building that we currently do own at Channing Philbrick Park. The Penfield School District has been utilizing that building and leasing that from us. Additionally, the other set of picture or pictures that Kerry has is.
With the Channing Philbrick one, what's this purpose from the school?
To be honest, I believe their IT department is utilizing that building currently.
I think they also put their, like their snowplow and.
I know their building in, building grounds maintenance has utilized a portion of that. There's kind of a fenced area and a pole barn that they keep some equipment, as well as us. Exactly what they do in that building, I don't know for sure.
So it's just leasing of the space. I guess my train of thought is if they're going to shoulder a portion of the cost at all.
Well, do they lease? Do they pay rent or lease? Is there, I don't know about.
If they do, I know they cover the utility cost, but I don't know if they pay the town anything for the actual building itself.
I think, I was in the building, maybe within the last year. It seems like it's largely empty.
I mean, the building itself was formerly a sewer treatment plant when the town kind of had its own, or I guess, prior to the county installing their own county interceptor and taking everything up to Van Laer. With that, it's been decommissioned. It's no longer a sewer treatment plant, but does have some inside kind of garage and storage space. Our Parks Department previously worked out of that building.
The Town Hall annex.
Yes.
To Pete's point, I was in it in the last year as well, and there wasn't much in it. Other than some mechanics type equipment, and there's a few guys working around. And I wonder, are they going to be moving out of there with the project up here on Jackson and Plank?
So they are. As part of the, my understanding with the, as part of the bus garage project, everything that's at their current facility on Five Mile Line will be moving down to Plank and Jackson. And the little bit of kind of space that they were using in this building will be relocated to their current site on, to the current bus garage site on Five Mile Line. So we do own the building. We've noticed that there are some leaks developing and really does need a roof replacement. There's two layers on this roof already, so you can't just throw another layer on. It will require, you know, a complete tear off and re-roof. Given the age of the building, we are unsure about if there is any asbestos or any hazardous material. So I am having that, that testing done to be able to verify and have that paperwork in hand either way. You know, ultimately, the town owning it, we need to know. But I wanted to bring this kind of somewhat as informational, if the town board is, you know, accepting of this and as well as the other site that I'll have Kerry pull up. The current 2024, I guess, facilities budget does not have the funds to cover the cost of these, and we would need to appropriate additional funds for that. So I wanted to bring it up. I can certainly put together bids based on the, at least the one estimate that we got. It's already, I think the first estimate we got was 50, a little over $50,000. So it also does exceed the threshold for public bidding. I can put together bid, I guess, bid specifications. We can go out for bid, see where those numbers come back before we have to make any decisions on how much is allocated or where from. But this is the other site, and it's the barn on Shadow Pines along Wayland Road by the curve right across from the quarry. The Penfield players have been using a portion of it for storage. And we also have some DPW equipment within there, and we'll need to continue utilizing this during the construction of our new building. So it's kind of an aerial as well as the roadside, just to show the footprint of each of those two. Again, somewhat informational, but also wanted to, you know, I guess, make the board aware in that, you know, we would be anticipating putting bid specifications together to at least get numbers on these so that we can potentially move forward.
What's the future plan for the Philbrick Park structure, if there is one? Is there a use anticipated for that?
Not that I'm aware of currently.
But that might be something that the Parks and Rec Master Plan Committee is considering or thinking about as they go through the process of updating the master plan for Parks and Rec.
Do you have any buildings that need roof replacement that are actually being utilized?
The, again, the one on Wayland Road is being utilized currently at Shadow Pines, as well as the restroom back here in the park. It is utilized by the town. The one at Channing Philbrick being utilized by the school district. We own the building. They're the ones using it, but it is starting to, or we've noticed that it is developing leaks.
And all three need replacement, not repair?
Correct.
We own them, right? We're not tearing anything down, I don't imagine. I mean, at some point, we have to.
It's not, not a middle to do that.
Yeah, getting the numbers doesn't cost any money.
Eric, I don't know if it's even feasible, but I'm thinking for the Channing Philbrick Park building, is there any advantage, disadvantage to a metal roof versus a replacement asphalt roof? Are those things that you would look at? I mean, I don't know enough about them, but.
I know a portion, and it's prior to, I guess, my time at the town. I know the, there have been additions onto that building. So there is a portion that actually has a sloped or flat roof underneath it. I can certainly put that within the bid specifications that, I guess, to price it both ways, whether it was to be a metal roof versus an asphalt shingle.
There's an advantage, a price advantage to one or the other, but.
I think the asphalt shingle is going to be cheaper, but the metal is also going to be, going to be more durable and have a longevity.
You can't put metal over asphalt.
You can.
The building code says no. After two layers, you're out of luck.
Is it possible to price them differently? One for a full tear off, replaced with asphalt, and then another for any feasible type of repair?
I suppose yes, but I don't know if they're going to.
They're going to tell you it needs.
I think they're going to, well, and I think they're going to even give you a unit base. It's, you know, this much per, you know, per shingle, per square foot, per whatever, without knowing definitively how much work they may run into.
Maybe a slightly different question. Is there, has, have you or somebody from the town already made the determination that the full replacement needs to take place, opposed to repair?
Yes, our facilities foreman went up to look, to try to identify to see if there's a small hole or leak that could be patched, repaired to buy time. And at least the one at Channing Philbrick, it's getting pretty substantial.
So, I mean, I agree. We own them and we should take care of them. You know, I don't want any of these facilities to become like the Clark Barn 2.0, right? But it's, I guess, my struggle and hesitation is like, we put a tarp on that thing and it's, you know, and the justification previously was because there was no intended use. I'm hearing these are just like glorified storage units, right? Like, they're not actually being utilized in a way that's like, oh, yeah, let's justify the cost of appropriating monies from a different budget to cover this, since you said that we don't have funds allocated in this budget. So I would like, you know, again, I'm not opposed, I'm not trying to like let the buildings rot. I'm just trying to see if there's a different cost-effective way to kind of hold, abate the leak and repair to the extent without doing a $50,000, $100,000 new roof on when the rest of the building, like, I don't know, if it sits empty, particularly for the Channing Philbrick one. If we've already know that the equipment there is going to be moved elsewhere, then why am I putting on a brand new roof to a building that's going to stand empty? Like, I'm struggling with that, which is why I've asked, can we repair it? So again, not opposed, getting bids, cool. I'm not sure that I'll be in favor of it at the end. I would ask that, at the same time you do bids, can we do an inventory of all other fully utilized or even like 90% utilized town buildings to see if there's a different roof that takes higher priority than this empty storage unit?
Sure.
Cool, thank you.
Yep, and then, I guess, anytime we put bid specifications together for these bigger projects, always wanted to have a kind of a site walk so that contractors can actually come out. They can see everything. They can ask questions. I guess as part of that, I can get their opinion on the probability for repair versus replacement.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I defer to the experts there, you know. I don't know, those are my thoughts. I don't know how you, how you guys feel.
If they're going to come out to give a bid, if they're roofers, if the person looked at it, I certainly trust their knowledge. But again, it would be good to just have the subject matter experts, they do this all the time, just to say, are there other options? And if they say no, then we've got to consider what to do next.
Okay, so you'll work on?
I'll work on putting bid specifications that we can, and a subsequent resolution to advertise for those bids.
Oh, nope, not anymore.
Okay, never mind.
Remember, the.
All right.
We're trying to have, have.
Old harbor, how old, how it's die hard.
Yes.
But to at least, you know, facilitate or expedite by your word.
Yes.
But thank you for sharing at least this building on Wayland Road. I always wondered what that was for, and there's all those no trespass signs. So obviously not trying to get in trouble, but. What's this place?
All right, well, thank you. We'll move back to Mr. Valentine for discussion about the firearm discharge map revisions.
So we talked about this at the last work session, and the board asked at that time to go back, do some history research and see when the map was created, what the intent of the map was, and if there was any instructions on when the map should be amended for that. So I did go back. I did find minutes from the 1970s. Had the minutes and basically said, we hereby create this map, and here's the boundary and description of said map. And then a map was attached. So unfortunately, didn't provide a, you know, when it gets to this density, we should extend the map. We should modify, update. So unfortunately, I didn't find too much instruction, but, you know, did go back and find that. So I guess just kind of back is, you know, where do we want to go from here? You know, I think obviously we've got a couple of different options. We can leave the map alone. We can move on the updates. We can, obviously, we've got people for, against on both sides of making changes, extending the changes. To me, at the very least, I'd like to at least.
Rename it.
Rename it, thank you. If the board can vote to just rename the map to the firearm discharge map for keeping the map, I think just to get that misnomer or that, you know, their clarification out there would be helpful. If we just want to leave the map alone, that's fine. I was just requested by a previous board to provide update to it and to, you know, take that on. So just trying to carry that forward. If we want to just leave it alone, leave it as is for now and revisit it again someday down the road, you know, we can do that as well. Just trying to provide the board with what you're looking for.
And just to be, just so we say it again, so the reason for the name change is because in that area, you're allowed to hunt, providing you're not, depending on the weapon or the item you're using to do the hunting, right?
That's.
There's an underlying rules and regulations by the state of New York. So the New York State DEC issues hunting, you know, things, you know, across the area. So whether we have a firearm discharge map or not, you're allowed to hunt on the bay. You're allowed to hunt in other areas. You can use a, you know, bow and arrow, crossbow. You just can't use a firearm. So we've always called it the hunting map, and it really is not. It's a misnomer that it's not a hunting map, and those regulations are covered by the state. So I think just to say firearm discharge map at least clarifies what it is a little bit better than hunting map, because that's, we don't regulate that. The DEC regulates that. The state regulates that. You know, there's rules and regulations to how far you can be from a structure, a school, you know, a church. So, you know, that's a little bit different.
Seems to make sense.
I did notice, and I get that, right, because calling it a hunting map sounds like we're.
We're dictating.
But I did notice within what you provided, the 1970, was it? That it does include a long bow. So.
I saw that.
I wouldn't think of a firearm, you know.
And it hasn't been interpreted as that. And I mean, I think that's, you know, also been DEC allows those, you know, everywhere. So, and that rules and regulations may have changed by the state, you know, since the 70s that have updated that, so.
I think the map changes, so you know, also would support, this map corresponds to chapter 116 of Town Code called Firearms. So, and it references just an official town map. So this is the map it's referring to, except we've been incorrectly calling it the hunting map. So at the very least, the firearm name change would be more in line with the section of Town Code that it goes with.
I don't even know if you need to, if the board needs to vote.
No, there's no change, there's no vote needed. We just have to make a change.
If we note it in the minutes, and then we'll just change it on our mapping.
What our code says already.
I think there is, what we, I think we need to determine is if we have set these rules in place, these guidelines, these rules. rules in place, these guidelines, these rules, for places where there is a residence, and, you know, they're living in proximity, they're close to each other, and everywhere else in Penfield has these rules where you're not allowed to discharge your firearms. And in the past 40 years, 50 years now, we have new areas. I don't know how we ignore what we've done already. I don't know how we, and I'm struggling with this, I'm truly struggling with this, because I understand hunting, the DEC is going to decide all that, we're not saying hunting, we're not saying hunting, but if where I live says no firearm because of the proximity, because of the the amount of people living in there, and there is now a new development that is exactly the same as mine as far as number of residents, I don't know how we don't adapt and accommodate rules that apply to my area now need to apply to these other areas. I don't know how we ignore that for new residential areas. And maybe we do, maybe we can. I, but that is a struggle.
So, the discharge of firearms would still be in violation of state law. So, if you were too close to a building, would you still be in violation of DEC's regulations? Regardless of what our map says, if I'm, you know, I live on, I live on a subdivision, and I have woods behind me that goes to Willow Pond. So, if I decided I'm gonna, you know, decide I see a deer in my backyard, I'm taking my best shot, which I would never do, I don't own a gun, but, but I would still be getting in trouble because I'm discharging a firearm too close to other people's houses. I could be arrested for that more than likely, correct?
Yep.
Yeah, so, even though my house is in the map that's in, it doesn't matter that my house is or isn't in the in the place where it says I'm allowed to shoot a gun or I'm not, I'm too close, correct?
Yep.
I, yeah, I guess I get confused by all this, too.
Why do we even have a firearm?
That's the question.
Why do we...
That's the big question.
No other, yeah, no other community does.
Okay.
So, this is unique. So, some communities that are very dense, City of Rochester, Rondacote, Brighton, they have no firearm discharge in the entire town. They're very dense communities. There are no rural areas, there's no, you know, open farmlands. I've found no other town, and I've called the other ones, kind of the surrounding areas, no one has a map of this sort. So, either they have no firearm discharge across the town, if they're very dense, there is, you know, City of Rochester is no farmland, rural areas, or they just rely on the state regulations. They just say, we defer to the state, we defer to the DEC, you got to follow the rules and regulations, got to be 500 feet from a building, you've got to, you know, meet those things. I've talked to Webster, I've talked to Henrietta, I've talked to Perrington, I've talked to Chi-Li, Greece, all of those surrounding communities that have subdivisions and some rural areas, none of them have a map of this type. So, that's why this map, and these regulations are a little bit unique, nobody else has anything quite like this. So, that's why we're kind of stuck a little bit.
Can you, yeah. Carrie, can you open the town of Penfield, the hunting area that's proposed by the state, and help me understand this map? Because this, then, is what the New York State is saying, correct? The one map that you provided in our files, the town of Penfield hunting map, that's from New York State, I assume?
Oh, this is the...
No? Okay.
That was the name.
That was the, well, if you pull that one up, that's, you can pull it over.
This is just a map of...
This is the original 1970 map.
Okay.
So, 1970, when they adopt...
A state map.
In a, the state map does kind of follow closely. There's like an area I and, I think it's J and H or something for the the two areas. So, this was the original 1970 map that was adopted. So, they did a meets and bounds and said, here's the, here's east and west, and here's, you know, unpermitted permitted areas when they they created it. And then we've got our existing map, and then that was the other ones, we kind of showed the, as you said, the areas that have kind of become developed in the last time since we did an update, we kind of showed those areas. We've got the mixed-use area, we've got a couple of neighborhoods that we were proposing to add in if we were going to amend it. And then the last one, you know, we showed kind of if that was amended, what that...
Right, what it would look...
Would look like. And we had some, you know, some farmers come out and say, hey, mine kind of got caught up on that, and said, yes, we can easily amend that, the berry property, clear property came out, and said, we can modify and take them out. They weren't, that was kind of more me just kind of drawing a straight line. You know, they're not in the the developed subdivision areas, so those could easily be modified to take that out. That's if the board wants to move ahead with the amendments, but again, we're unique in having this map, and I haven't found another community, at least in Monroe County, that has something similar.
Pittsburgh has one, I think.
Okay. Okay, I didn't call Pittsburgh, so I missed that one.
I apologize, I can't zoom any further in here, but you'll see this, I pulled those up from DEC website, wildlife, and sort of that blue line.
Yeah, so we're between C and F on our...
Yeah.
But again, it goes over the city of Rochester, so technically, hunting is allowed in the city of Rochester. That still has to follow the regulations of 500 feet. Whether you can find a spot that meets that...
And there's all...
It's hard to, it's hard to...
It's hard to do. I mean, the state shows that hunting is allowed everywhere in New York State, but you've got to meet those minimum requirements.
During certain periods of time, too.
You've got to meet hunting season, and I'm not a hunter, so I don't know all that, but, you know, deer season and...
Yeah, very...
Yeah, there's there's permits for it and everything else that you've got to follow.
I will always remember the residents who came in that evening and said, you know, I'm waiting at the bus stop with my children, I'm out walking my dog at night. And I think hearing gunshots, gunshots now is not the same. It's different now for people than it was 30, 40, 50 years ago. So, I can really understand where they're coming from. I don't know that we have the ability to do much. And that's, that's what I'm trying to understand. Where do, where do the other, where do my fellow town board members?
No, I, I think I agree with your, your last statement, for sure.
So, I mean, I have children, too, right?
Right.
I mean, we all, we all do. So, I, so I'm sympathetic, sympathetic to the concerns that were expressed, but I don't believe that the town instituting this expanded map or even making it like all throughout Penfield will not fix that concern, because persons who discharge illegally aren't going to stop at a map, right? And for those true safety concerns, like, that's not the town's, we can't do anything to really stop illegal discharge. That's going to be, that's the jurisdiction of the police or other, or law enforcement. I think my struggle where I'm at is, I really wanted to understand if there was a compelling reason historically or something that we were overlooking as to why we should preserve the map even in its current form, or with some semblance of it. I think what I, what I was looking up and trying to have the conversation before with Pete was that already we have a layer of DEC law, and then we have town law and New York State criminal procedure law that prohibits the illegal discharge or even legal discharge of a firearm within 500 feet of a dwelling, or, of course, you can't aim it at people, right, with reckless endangerment. So, there's already like all these layers of law, and I didn't understand where the little town of Penfield discharge map fit in all of those layers. Like, I don't see the added protection of having another town firearm restriction map. All of the school, right, all of the school zones are no firearm zones as it is. So, I feel like the way, the places that we, the spirit of the law for the board in wanting to protect highly densely populated areas will already be protected by some other applicable law directly on point, and all of the schools where children, again, bus, et cetera, et cetera, will already be protected by some other, other law. And so I looked to Pittsburgh as an example where they have a map, but it, like, in my opinion, it just made the entire town of Pittsburgh no discharge because it's so densely populated. So, for me, like, I totally agree with renaming the map if we continue to have it so that it gets away from the misnomer.
So, just as a point of clarification, the reference, there's only, I think, one reference to the the map in Chapter 116. Could be a very easy strike of Item A under 116 dash 2, and I'll pull it up just so we can all be looking at it at the same time. It says it should be unlawful for any person to discharge in the area set forth in the map, and then it goes on to B, and it names the minimum distances. So, you could strike A and not change the elements that were providing the protections. I think this mirrors what the state requires. It's duplicative, to your point.
The, that, the, within 500 feet of any dwelling house, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah.
That tracks DEC law.
Yeah.
So, DEC, five, that, and that's, I think that's, 500 feet to me is nothing. That's amazing that DEC says 500 feet. That's what, four houses on my street? Maybe five houses down the street, 500 feet? We're not going to change it, I don't even want to discuss it, but that, that amazed me, 500 feet. It's very close to me. Anyway, so...
So, but, but that would protect your, the concern also, right? Like, if it's within that proximity, if it, if I'm setting, like, I think one of the concerns that you said was, was I'm setting at a bus stop and then across the road.
Right.
But if I extended this map all the way to Salt, to the border, and someone on the other border of Penfield, right, shoots a firearm, like, I can't address that concern. It's outside of the board's jurisdiction.
Right.
So, I'm sympathetic to those, again.
Right, right, right.
But I don't think the board can do anything about when it gets that far rural, and we can't extend the map all the way to Wayne, you know, so...
I think the other challenge, too, is the, the sound and where it is in proximity to you can be very difficult to determine. Like, it sounds louder on a clear day. I just know from, on a cloudy day, it might sound closer than it does on a clear day because sound travels differently. So, just the other factor is like, are, like, who's bringing out the measuring tape to determine where they are?
So, so again, knowing that we can't, like, immediately address the actual concern, but on the flip side, there were material quantifiable harms to the businesses, the farmers, the persons with crop fields, like, I think, for me, I'm in favor of renaming it if we keep it as is. I am also not opposed to keeping it either as is or or doing away with the map. But I would defer to counsel there in case I, if there is a compelling reason to at least keep some modicum of a map.
I don't think I would get rid of the map without having a better understanding of of what that might, what other kind of a trickle effect that might have. There is just, I, when I was looking, Carrie was pulling this up, there are exceptions, even in the zone where a resident of the town of Penfield or any person authorized in writing by such resident when engaged in exterminating wildlife or vermin that is damaging crops on such resident's land. So, there's already kind of this notion that the farmers can use a firearm even if they were covered by that restriction on the map, but...
I think that's a key component that you just shared.
Yeah. The penalties are also pretty minor.
Oh, my gosh. I didn't want to bring that up and throw whoever wrote them in the, in under the bus, but, you know, it's not $25 to $100. I think somebody could...
It was probably also written in the 70s.
It hasn't caught up with inflation.
But we're still not encouraging people to...
Correct. No, we're not.
Break the law and just pay $25.
We are not, but it's certainly not...
They'll also lose their, it is taken away.
Yeah.
But that's probably more than the fine, quite frankly.
That hurts more than, yeah.
Yeah.
I guess I, my, my view, I probably would not be in favor of now doing away with the map, only because I don't feel like we have a good understanding of why the map was put in place in the first place. And I think I just, to kind of get rid of it without understanding that better, I think that's, it seems like a risky proposition. But, you know, if the map is maybe just renaming the map and then kind of putting it on a shelf and kind of figuring, you know, thinking about whether or not this gets revisited in the future.
Yeah, it definitely needs to be renamed. I just, you know, to me, it's, it still seems redundant, you know, and I, I think that perhaps we should look into eventually abolishing the map. I mean, there's really no big time pressure to do that, but...
We could rename the map now with...
Right.
And then continue the conversation.
We can defer it to a later session.
Yeah, and, you know, I do want to visit. I agree with renaming it. I do want to, I think, tabling it for further conversation because, based on what you shared, the, the landowners and farmers were concerned if we extended it further. When I look at the map that you initially proposed, bless your heart, there, there wasn't. There was one section of what I would consider open land, farmland, and that was right by Jackson Road. I think everything else, there wasn't that same concern. It wasn't about the farmers who were protecting crops, it wasn't about the farmers who were leasing their land. I think their concern came into place if we extended to Salt Road.
Yeah.
Again, but that's just my recall. So, that's why I still want to consider this, so I would be in favor of tabling it, favor of renaming the map, but further consideration. I might...
So, yeah, so I, I do want to at least not lose sight of it. So, Deputy Supervisor, I'd like to make a motion at this point to correct the misnomer and rename the map from hunting map to firearm discharge map or firearm restriction map. I don't really care about the name, I'll defer to the town and then, so that we're aligned with other towns as well. And then I'd like to bring it back for a future work session to also include Supervisor Leanhouse, because I know that he also had positions on both sides, and he had made a commitment to residents to talking with him as well, so he can bring other feedback. And then, of course, Councilperson Ted Lash, if you had other thoughts, it gives Mr. Valentine additional time for research. So, if we can bring it back to a work session in May, I think that would give sufficient time. Do, is that fair?
I think that's fair, very fair.
Okay.
All right. So, a motion by Councilperson Lee, do we have a second?
I will second that.
Seconded by Councilperson Ted Lash. The clerk will call the roll.
Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Akden?
Aye.
Ted Lash?
Aye.
Oh, aye.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Valentine. We'll move on to informational items, and Ms. Ivors, we'll start with you.
I will, I will keep these, these are informational items only, so there is not, that we can discuss as much or as little as all of you would like. This first one is a pretty straightforward one. You'll remember this from last year. The Penfield Education, Educational Foundation is hosting their 5K. I apologize, the date of, oh, I, thank God, I wrote it in the title, April 21st. And so, they notified us and following the same process we did last year, I wanted to let you all know about that. In previous years, the town has sent postcards to the property owners along the the running route. We did that last year as well because it had been a practice carried on prior to COVID. Certainly, we do social media posts on Facebook, on our website, we post some version of this map. There is a cost to the town to do a postcard. I don't know if that's absolutely necessary, so I wanted to chat with you to decide. You know, the postcards that go out are the small ones. I don't know how often they get lost in the mail. I'm not sure if the social media is ample and Facebook posting is sufficient to let folks know. It's a small window of time in the morning on the 21st. And so, that was just one question as to whether or not you wanted me to, we could prepare the postcards. The estimated cost for postage is about $120 to send the postcards. That's just the postage only.
Yeah. I'm okay with foregoing the postcards for it.
Okay.
I don't know how others feel.
Are the roads closed?
They, I don't know, I know Monroe County Sheriff's involved. I think the road is, like, there's the crossing for that one period of time across Baird Road. I think people are running on the streets. I don't think, they're in the neighborhood.
I can tell you...
I see that. And it's at the crosswalk, probably right there on Baird.
Yeah, so I think Councilwoman Ted Lash will recall our children running those same streets and track, so, on long runs.
I enjoy watching this go by my house every year.
Okay.
Not running in it, but watching it.
And watching it.
Very clear.
Cheering on.
I'm going to make a motion that all the board run it this year. No second.
Silence.
But the roads are not, yeah, they're not closed, they're not closed down. It's just, you know, as a neighbor, you just have to kind of...
It's neighbor, but you wouldn't need...
Just have to be aware that it's happening. But it's never been a problem from my view, so...
Okay. Well, I'll work with the communications director, Communication Director. I've already alerted him to this, and he's got it on his radar to promote it on various social media and the town's website, just so people are aware.
All right.
All right, moving on. And I'm sorry, do you want me just to keep on going?
Yeah, go ahead.
Since that's like, all three of these are mine.
Yep, you got it.
I do apologize. So, as you recall, in the comprehensive plan that was adopted just last, late last year in October, the Appendix E included a series of zoning map amendment recommendations that were reviewed... amendment recommendations that were reviewed by the Comprehensive Plan Committee. Most of those were identified through individual property owners coming to the town, asking about rezoning. That request getting relayed through the Comprehensive Plan Committee and then recommendation would ensue. So I'm going to pull up for you a map that sort of captures this potential rezoning. And I'll make one note of a caveat. So you'll see, you know, the properties on Northrop, you'll see properties on Fairport, Nine Mile Line Point Road, and Allen's Creek Valley Townhouses. Some of these were identified because the underlying zoning doesn't match what was actually physically built. And there's been some additional requests that have come in recently that are in keeping with the same idea and the property on Terrell Drive. And if I'm not saying that correct, I feel like I say it differently every time I pronounce it. That's over in the vicinity, up here across from Baytown Plaza. So most of these, you'll note that 1423 never got rezoned, but the property right next door did because the owner at the time requested the rezoning. So this, in bringing this to the board, it's an opportunity to implement a recommendation in the comprehensive plan. And so the town board has complete discretion on rezoning. They can elect to make map amendments on their own. They can elect to hear or receive map amendment requests. Or they can not have to, they're not obliged to review map amendment requests by individual property owners. It's really a discretionary decision the town board holds. I wanted to bring it to the town board. The supervisor was supportive of having the conversation just as an informational item, no actions being requested to say, would you like me to bring this to the board as an action item in the future to get this in motion? This was essentially involve a local law to amend the official zoning map. Likely, depending on the acreage total, we might be doing this as a type one action, which we talked about earlier, because there is a threshold in the requirements under Seeker for a number of acres being impacted by a zoning change. We'll have to look at that a little bit more closely with the town attorney because it's not adding a new district, but it is affecting sort of the underlying zoning for individual parcels. Or just, do you want to have some more time to look at it and then we could, I can always talk about it at a future work session. I just wanted to raise the idea and determine whether or not the town board wanted to move forward with it. I will share with you that the owners of 27 Terrell Drive were not included in the original ask. They've come forward recently. And I told them that this was on the horizon with the town board to look at other properties that had been identified and that I would include it in the discussion. And you'll see there's a handy, and I'll do a shout out to Matt Prinzing, our junior planner and GIS extraordinaire, who prepared the mapping that you're looking at. And they've, he's included a summary of the individual properties, what the current zoning is and what the proposed change would be. And so if there's questions, thoughts?
Carrie, the 2013, the very last one under the table, the 2013 to 2039 Fairport Nine Mile.
Yeah.
It says it's multiple residence or townhouse dwelling. Is that because it backs up to Nine Mile? It looks like that's just Wayland and.
That's Pembroke.
250.
So it's 250 across from Pembroke Drive. And then it also flips, part of it's on the west side and part of it's on the east side. So there's, much of the east side is already MR where the senior living facility is. That's all multi-residential. And then there's a few single-family residential homes.
Right.
So the committee looked and said, as Carrie zooms in, you can see those couple of parcels that Jenga piece that looks, or the Tetris piece, the piece on the east side is surrounded wholly by the lands by the senior living facility. So it looked at the committee saying, do we all make all of that MR? And then the west side, that backs up to Rothfuss Park, no, excuse me, Harris Hill Park.
And this is in line with other properties that are zoned LB.
There's business ones that backs up to what was the gymnastics facility and then being across from Pembroke Drive, whether that becomes a traffic light or now an access to the plaza in there. So the committee looked at that and said, if you ever did come out of Pembroke, had a traffic light and then went to the west side, it would make sense to have more of that be, you know, commercial or townhouse.
Yeah. I just thought those were all single homes right there.
There's one empty parcel right north of the former gymnastics facility that's just an empty piece of land. The others are single-family homes. Could remain single-family homes even if it was rezoned. And then same on the east side. You know, those are single-family houses, but they may make more sense as being two families or, you know, converted just since they're surrounded by the senior living facility on that side.
And then also it's, the proximity to Pembroke Drive is really the driving factor too in terms of future land assembly and the cost of installing a light. A developer would need more room to make, that makes sense.
And yeah, I mean, along 250, a lot of that area has changed, you know, with the office parks there, the senior facility and stuff like that. So does a single-family house make sense, you know, carrying into the future? Those people may, you know, get more value out of it as selling it as a multifamily unit or something else.
The town board did something similar, I think, in the properties that were all single-family homes on 441.
Yes.
You know, they changed them to business use or something.
Yeah.
They were all single-family homes.
You've got a.
Remained single-family homes until eventually they were developed and that's why.
Some of them have.
My side is.
And on the other side, you've got the, you've got the Udental and you've got RenGen Orthodontics on the other corner. Those have kind of slowly, you know, transitioned. Some are still single-family residential.
And in some cases, multiple properties were bought by a developer to have some land assembly. So it just allows for, you know, the, yeah. And also taking advantage of the, you know, infrastructure available in these already commercialized centers. So again, there's no action needed tonight. We can decide to bring it back to the board as an action item if it's something the town board wants to move forward with. If, if that's not the case, then I'm, you know, we can certainly, if, as, as rezoning requests come through, we can bring that through to the supervisor to determine whether or not the town board wants to entertain those applications as we've done in the past, following that past practice.
Okay. Any other comments regarding the map? And if not, pleasure for direction for Carrie. Is it something we want to?
And you can certainly think about it. No need, no need to decide tonight.
Is the process that you, I know you spoke with the Terrell Drive. How about the other parcels? I mean.
So the other parcels were, I believe, part of the, through the comprehensive plan. Some, the, I have to get some, I'll get background from members of the planning department. Doug Sangster was directly involved. And Mark, I can't remember if the individual property owners were, some of them are staff identified changes and others are, were requested specifically by the property owners. And I think that in any case, any action that the town board were going to move forward with, individual properties that might be impacted would get postcards, surrounding areas would get communicated with. And again, it wouldn't change the use as it sits.
Right.
You're not, we're not kicking anybody out of their house or making them change the use. It just means that going forward, the development that'd be available in those parcels is different from what it might be right now.
Right.
And in some cases, it's making the zoning match what is actually built. For example, the 27 Terrell Drive is currently zoned general business, which doesn't allow residential dwellings unless it's a mixed combination of retail and residential. But the buildings were constructed, the apartment buildings. So I don't know how that, they got built. But, but trying to right-size the zoning so it matches, makes sense. And right now, they're, they're at a detriment because they want to, they've, you know, they want to actually have all apartments and they're limited in doing that because they're in the general business district. That's just one example. So again, no decision needs to be made. I just wanted to bring it to your attention that there's an opportunity to make these amendments if the town board desired to do so.
Seem like keep moving forward with?
I think we should move forward.
Okay. All right. Then I'll put it on a future agenda for, as an action item then.
Okay.
Okay. Excellent. And then the last item for information purposes is four corners district regulations. We, in, in working with applicants and property owners over the course of the last couple of years in my time here, it's, it's certainly been question of like, okay, why do I have to get a, go to the town board for this? I have a tenant space. I'm not understanding the requirements. I think in other places with site development, some of the regulations were either open-ended or not, or they're defined and referencing other sections in other places in the zoning code for, for where to get instructions or guidelines on how to develop. And they didn't always match the four-corner zoning district. And I'll point to signage as one example. So in the current code, it points to our generic signage section of the town, of the zoning code. But that's not at all what we're trying to achieve in the historic four corners district. The current language of the district also does not at all reference the fact that there might be historic preservation needed. And I thought that that should be more like clearly stated as part of the district requirements. And then also looking at separate sections for design guidelines and then also operational guidelines with respect to sort of how development should look and feel versus, you know, the hours of operation and trash removal and things of that nature. So just trying to not change the town board and actually then more clearly stating that the town board has unfettered discretion. Unlike other districts, everything, every decision stays with the town board. There's no variances, no planning board. It's town board is the reviewer of any development that needs approval. But we also, I did, in working with staff, and I'll just share that we have a working sort of draft revision that has been vetted among several staff members from the planning, engineering, and building and zoning departments. We worked together going through it to get to a draft that we felt comfortable sharing with the town board, at least in theory. And again, this is an option of, should we move forward with potential changes to the district? And it defines applications that absolutely require town board approval, but it also provides threshold for when administrative staff approval could be granted. And a good example would be conditional use permit for a like, in-kind change in occupancy. So that they don't have, because that can add two months of time, sometimes longer. And for folks, if we're trying to encourage business occupancy and reducing, you know, vacancy and, you know, expanding tenancy opportunities, I think it's, there's an opportunity to make this a little bit more efficient. So that's why I wanted to bring it. And also I've, if I have to explain to one more property owner, town board, I mean, I'm kidding. I'm happy to explain. But it also, I think, would make better use of the town board's time in terms of the things you really care about and want to have a say over versus, right now, if a building owner changes, they have to come to you to tell you that. That doesn't, that seems pretty inefficient. And nowhere else in other zoning districts do they have to tell you that. Maybe the other specialty districts. So again, not anything we have to act on. Just wanted to put it out there as an opportunity. There's no timeline for this. If you want to take it up soon, if you want to wait, this, you know, obviously this is, again, this is a zoning revision. So this would be by virtue of a local law. There is that process where we set, you know, establish a resolution, introducing the idea of the local law and setting a public hearing. You hold the public hearing. Then you continue to refine whatever the version of the language is going to be. And then the adoption has to happen only after the final version of the local law has been in your possession for 10 days, not including, so there's time. There's a process that would be followed. It's not anything that happens in a rush. And I'm happy to talk to anybody offline if you want to further understand the glory and insight of zoning code, which I geekily enjoy way too much.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for all that. We'll move on. Held items. I don't believe we have any old business, none that I'm aware of. No new business. And our next, or is there any new business? I guess I should ask. Not aware of any. Next work session is March 20th. I'd like to thank everyone for their participation, staff for sticking around later than usual night. A lot of business to deal with here. And thank you to PCTB. And other than that, we'll call for adjournment at 8:56.